The agenda is their motion to adopt the agenda. Who's, well, before we do the motion, it was sent out prior. Any questions? We need a motion to adopt the agenda. There's a motion and a. All in favor say aye. Those no, ayes have it, and the adoption of the agenda is adopted. So we are on to item C, which is the approval of the February ninth, twenty twenty-three minutes. Commissioners, those were sent out prior and posted as well. And are there any questions? Or we can entertain a motion to adopt the minutes? Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Those no, ayes have it, and the minutes are adopted. And before we do the recognition of the council members, this is probably out of order. I apologize. I have a few announcements that I would like to just take a personal privilege moment to announce, and I think it's some really great stuff. And so the first thing is, one of our very own Commissioner Tibbs has been elevated, nominated, and then elevated to as a fellow of the American Institute of Architects, which is, I'm told, a very big deal, Commissioner. So congratulations. I want to. And just for many of you that haven't come down here, the commissioners were all voluntary citizens of Nashville, but everyone has a different profession and different input on this commission. And I know that each one of you love our city, and I appreciate that. And there's a lot of good expertise on this commission. So congratulations, Commissioner. Next, I'm personally extremely excited about this announcement. We actually, and I want to say thank you to the Director for working so diligently on it, but we finally have hired a new Deputy Executive Director of the Planning Commission. And I want to introduce you to Todd. Now, I'm going to butcher his last name. It's a very difficult last name, but I'm going to say it. Ocala Chaney. Ocala Chaney. And so Todd comes from the city of Asheville. He has over twenty years of professional experience in planning. And that, those areas include strategic planning, public policy, transportation, land development, and even civil engineering. He comes, like I said, from Asheville. He has a master's in planning and is a certified planner. We're exciting, we're very, very excited to have Todd join the team and be in Nashville. He says it's much better than Nashville already. No, he did not say that, but we do appreciate him coming here. I also want to thank the Vice Chair and several of the other team members that helped with the process of hiring him, and we look forward to working with you. And so, welcome. All right. So Commissioners, remember, be sensitive with the microphone. So touch the buttons slow, don't do a rapid fire on the pushing the buttons. And then also a reminder, if everybody would put their phones on silent, we would really appreciate it, so we can go through the meeting without any interruptions. So now we are on to item D, which is the recognition of the council members. And we take every council member as we see y'all come in. And so I first saw Councilwoman Hancock. You want to go now or during your item? During the item? Well, thank, welcome, welcome. And then I saw Councilwoman Marilyn Karen Roberts. Would you like to go now or? Okay, excellent, Councilwoman. Good to see everybody. And then I saw Councilwoman Gamble. Do you want? Okay, come on up. Welcome. Welcome, welcome. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you, and thank you for recognizing me, Councilmember Jennifer Gamble. I want to speak briefly on two items. First, number seventeen on your agenda, the Major and Collector Street Plan Amendment for Brick Church Lane. Brick Church Lane currently dead ends at Knight Road, and Knight Road is a heavily trafficked road that has a school on it, Academy School, also FedEx Distribution Center on it. So it has a lot of traffic. We've had one community meeting to discuss this community plan amendment, and there was a lot of support for it. In addition to that, we've had communication shared through my monthly newsletter and other email correspondence, and I haven't received any opposition to amending this Collector Street Plan to remove that connection from Brick Church Lane. To what it would have done is added more street to connect Brick Church Lane to White's Creek Pike, and there's about eighty acres or so of land in between there, but there's more support to just leave it as it is. And for that, I support the commission's approval of removing that extension. The second item is number twenty-five on your agenda, and it is a request to apply an historic overlay, landmark overlay on the property of eight fifteen Nella Drive. This property used to belong to Patsy Klein. I know many of you may know Patsy Klein. I'll spare you from singing her songs, but this property belonged to her, and the new owners, Natalie and Andrew Hannigan, who I believe are here, want to preserve that property, and we're asking to put a historic overlay over it. That again, I have not heard any opposition from the community. So for that, I support both of these projects and ask for your support. I'm going to have to leave early for the minority caucus reception, so I'll speak now, and then maybe the owner will speak once the item comes up for review. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Councilwoman Ed. Any questions to the council? Thank you very much for coming down. Next, I saw Councilwoman Benedict. You wait? Okay. Councilman Syracuse, where, here you go. Wait? Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Toomes, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have several items on the agenda. Item number sixteen A is a plan amendment, and it goes along with a, with item sixteen B, which is a contextual overlay for a neighborhood called the Gold Coast. And I wanted to go ahead and speak, because I have a few overlays on your agenda today. And I know there was some confusion from some constituents who felt that it was a rezone of their entire neighborhood. And as you know, overlays are not a rezone of the neighborhood. The purpose of a contextual overlay is to protect the character of the neighborhood and put certain design standards in place. And part of my goal as a council member, in response to being a resident, as well as in response to my constituents, is preserving historic and established neighborhoods. And so the overlays are an attempt to do that. There's also item number, where'd it go? Item number twenty-six, I'll speak when it comes up. It's a rezone request. And then item number thirty-three, which is a disapproval of R-15 and approval of R-20. I do support the R-20 rezone. This is, the owner is wanting to do a dadu, and so I did not want a situation in which the owner could subdivide and put multiple units, up to like four units on the property. So this, the R-20 would limit it to two and allow that property owner to do the dadu as requested. So I am in support of the R-20. And that's all I have for right now. I'll be back. Hopefully not, but.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. We appreciate that. All right. Did I see any other council members? I don't think I saw any. Okay. Seeing no other council members, we are next on item E, which is items for deferral withdrawal. And I believe Ms. Milligan is going to take us through this.
Yes. The following items are for deferral or withdrawal, starting on page three of your agenda, item one A, two thousand one U D zero zero two zero one two, Music Row U D O cancellation, and the associated case one B, twenty twenty-three S P zero one zero zero one, Sixteenth and McGavick S P. Staff recommendation is to defer both of those items to the March ninth Planning Commission Agenda, and I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing from those items. On page four of your agenda, item number two, twenty eighteen S P zero two six zero nine, the Reservoir Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March ninth meeting, and I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item three A and three B, twenty twenty-one C P zero zero six zero zero one, Bellevue Community Plan Amendment, and the associated S P, twenty twenty-one S P zero six one zero one, Bend at Bellevue S P. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March ninth meeting, and I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from those items. On page five of your agenda, item number four, twenty twenty-two S P zero three six zero zero one, Harpeth Reserve. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March ninth meeting. Item number five, twenty twenty-two S P zero six zero seven one zero zero one, Liberty Lane. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March ninth meeting. Item number six, twenty twenty-two S P zero seven nine zero zero one, seven seventeen Spence Lane S P. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March ninth meeting. Item number seven, twenty twenty-two Z zero one four T X zero zero one, An Ordnance Related to Trees. Staff recommendation is to withdraw. Item number eight, twenty twenty-two S two thirty-two zero zero one, King Subdivision. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March ninth meeting. On page six of your agenda, item number nine, twenty twenty-two S two fifty-nine zero zero one, rezone of Lot Two of the plan of Rural Hill Acres. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March ninth meeting. Item number ten, twenty twenty-two S two sixty-four zero zero one, five seven, fifty-seven thirteen through fifty-seven fifteen Maldina Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March ninth meeting. Item number eleven, twenty twenty-three S zero one zero 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 one, Tenon Subdivision. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number twelve, twenty twenty-three S zero two seven zero zero one, part of the vault property made by Earl Drake. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March twenty-third Planning Commission meeting. Item number thirteen, twenty twenty-three D T C zero zero five zero zero one, six oh one Lafayette. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March ninth meeting. On page seven of your agenda, item number fourteen, twenty twenty-three Z zero one seven P R zero zero one, a rezoning request on Abbott Martin Road. Staff recommendation is to withdraw. On page eight of your agenda, item number nineteen, twenty sixteen S P zero four zero zero two, Bethwood Commons Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number nine, I'm sorry, on page nine, item number twenty, twenty nineteen S P zero one four zero zero three, Goodrich Townhomes Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March ninth meeting. On page eleven of your agenda, item number thirty-one, twenty twenty-three S zero one six zero zero one, eight forty Old Lebanon Dirt Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March ninth meeting. Item number thirty-two, eighty-eight P zero three eight zero zero one, Long Hunter Chase. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March ninth meeting. That's it.
Thank you, Lisa. And so Commissioners, these are the items for deferral withdrawal. One A, one B, two, three A, three B, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, nineteen, twenty, thirty-one, and thirty-two. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, Commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral withdrawal. Is there a motion? It's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Those no, ayes have it, and those items are deferred to withdrawal. Now that takes us to item F, which is the consent agenda, and Ms. Milligan's going to take us through that, too.
As notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. I will read now the item number and the case name and ask if there's anyone in opposition. If there is, please raise your hand. If there are members of the audience in opposition, then the items will be heard in the order in which they appear on the agenda. Item fifteen A and fifteen B, twenty twenty-two C P zero zero five zero zero one, and twenty twenty-two S P zero three one zero zero one. Is there anyone in opposition to fifteen A and B? Okay, I see one. Those items will be presented. Items sixteen A and sixteen B, twenty twenty-three C P zero zero three zero zero one, and twenty twenty-three C O D zero zero two zero zero one. Is there anyone in opposition to sixteen A and B? I've seen, seeing none, those items will be on consent. Item number seventeen, twenty twenty-three C P zero 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 one, Major and Collector Street Plan Amendment. Is there anyone in opposition to item number seventeen? That item will be on consent. Item number eighteen, twenty twenty-three Z zero zero one T X zero zero one, a text amendment related to electric utility meters. Is there anyone in opposition to item number eighteen? It'll be on consent. Item number twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, on page nine, twenty twenty-two C P zero four five zero zero one, eight thirteen, Watts Lane. Is there anyone in opposition to item number twenty-one? Twenty-one will be heard. Item number, oh, that one's already being heard, twenty-two will be heard. But the public hearing is closed. Item number twenty-three, twenty twenty-three C O D zero zero one zero zero one. Is there anyone in opposition to item number twenty-three? That item will be on consent. Item number twenty-four, twenty twenty-three C O D zero zero three zero zero one. Is there anyone in opposition to item number twenty-four? That will be on consent. Item number twenty-five, twenty twenty-three H L zero zero one zero zero one, the historic overlay. Is there anyone in opposition to item number twenty-five? That will be on consent. Item number twenty-six, twenty twenty-three Z zero zero eight P R zero zero one, a rezoning on Brick Church Pike. Is there anyone in opposition to item number twenty-six? I see opposition, so that one will be presented. Item number twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three Z zero one zero P R zero zero one, a rezoning on Alberta Street. Is there anyone in opposition to item number twenty-seven? Twenty-seven will be on consent. Item number twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three Z zero one eight P R zero zero one, a rezoning on Clarksville Pike. Is there anyone in opposition to item number twenty-eight? Twenty-eight will be on consent. Twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three Z zero one nine P R zero zero one, a rezoning on Firestone Parkway. Is there anyone in opposition to item twenty-nine? Twenty-nine will be on consent. Item thirty, twenty twenty-three Z zero two zero P R zero zero one, a rezoning for various properties on Neely's Bend. Is there anyone in opposition to item number thirty? Thirty will be presented. And item number thirty-three, twenty twenty-three Z zero one five P R zero zero one, a rezoning on Hides Ferry Pike. Is there anyone in opposition to item thirty-three? Thirty-three will be on consent. Chair, I'm going to read through the captions now. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chain Street or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within sixty days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. The following items are on the consent agenda. Starting on page seven of your agenda, item number sixteen A, twenty twenty-three C P zero zero three zero zero one, White's Creek Haynes Trinity Community Plan Amendment. It's a request to amend the border White's Creek Haynes Trinity Community Plan by changing from neighborhood evolving to neighborhood maintenance for various properties along Ashland City Highway. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number sixteen B, twenty twenty-three C O D zero zero two zero zero one. It's a request to apply a contextual overlay for various properties along either side of Ashland City Highway. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number seventeen, twenty twenty-three C P zero 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 one, Major and Collector Street Plan Amendment, Brick Church Lane Extension Removal. It's a request to remove right-of-way designation for a future Collector Avenue identified by the Major and Collector Street Plan for properties along Knight Drive and White's Creek Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number eighteen, twenty twenty-three Z zero zero one T X zero zero one. It's a request to amend the Metropolitan Code to regulate the location of electrical utility meters in residential areas. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page nine of your agenda, item number twenty-three, twenty twenty-three C O D zero zero one zero zero one. It's a request to apply contextual overlay district to various properties located west of Liberia Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page ten of your agenda, item number twenty-four, twenty twenty-three C O D zero zero three zero zero one. It's a request to apply contextual overlay district to various properties located north of Mormons Arm Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number twenty-five, twenty twenty-three H L zero zero one zero zero one. It's a request to apply historic landmark overlay district for property located on Nella Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three Z zero one zero zero one. It's a request to rezone from R S five to R M nine A and S for property located on Alberta Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three Z zero one eight P R zero zero one. It's a request to rezone from C L to M U L A and S for property located on Clarksville Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three Z zero one nine P R zero zero one. It's a request to rezone from C L to I R for property located on Firestone Parkway. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number thirty-three, twenty twenty-three Z zero one five P R zero zero one. It's a request to rezone from R S five to, I'm sorry, R S fifteen to R-15 for property located on Hides Ferry Road. Staff recommendation is to disapprove R-15 and approve R-20. And under Other Business, item number thirty-four, an employ contract renewal for Amelia Lewis, and item number thirty-eight, to accept the Director's report.
Thank you, Lisa. And so Commissioners, these will be the items that we will pass on the consent agenda altogether. Those items are sixteen A, sixteen B, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-eight. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes.
Yes.
I think. Can you read those one more time?
Let's read them one more time. We, we'll go slow.
I'm sorry.
No, no worries. We want to get it right.
Yes.
All right. So the items to pass on the consent agenda together are the following. Sixteen A, sixteen B, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-eight. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, you've heard the items to pass together on the consent agenda. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Those no, ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. So now we are on to items to be considered, and so the following items will be considered tonight. We have five items, fifteen A and B, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-six, and thirty. So if you're not here for those items, you can still stick around if you would like. But we'll give a few minutes just so everybody can go out. So this is a good time. I want to, we try to keep it very professional here, and so we, everybody has a chance to speak if you want, and we have a process. So we ask everybody to be professional, be friendly, always address the chair. And for those of you who haven't been here, the process goes like this. We do the staff presentation, then we open the item for public hearing, and that's when you can speak. The applicant will go first. We'll have ten minutes. The applicant can save two of the ten minutes for rebuttal. Then we'll have anyone wishing to speak in support. Then we'll do everybody wishing to speak in opposition, and then we'll have the rebuttal. And then the council person has as much time as they so desire, because we love you all so much. And then we'll close the public hearing, and that's it. So we appreciate everybody coming down, and so we are ready for items fifteen A and B.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Andrea Barber with the Community Plan Section. I'm presenting agenda item fifteen A, a request to amend the East Nashville Community Plan. In addition, there is an associated rezoning with this plan amendment request. We will be presenting the items together, but you will need to vote on these individually. The applicant requested to amend the land use policy for the property outlined in red. Staff recommends approval to amend the East Nashville Community Plan by amending the community character policy from urban neighborhood maintenance, T four N M, to urban neighborhood center, T four N C, and urban neighborhood evolving, T four N E, located at fourteen ten Branch Street and fourteen, fifteen hundred Porter Road. The policy amendment has been requested in conjunction with the request to change zoning from mixed-use limited and residential to a specific plan for these properties. The property is located in an urban transect with suburban transect nearby. The existing land use policy surrounding the area is conservation, urban neighborhood maintenance, urban neighborhood center, suburban neighborhood maintenance, civic and open space. These are the existing conditions around the area. It's located south of Inglewood Neighborhood at the intersection of Kahal, some say Kahal, Avenue and Porter Road. Currently, it contains the Berkshire Place Apartments and a Dollar General. And then to the north is the South Inglewood Community Center and Park. To the northeast and south are single-family residential areas. To the west is another apartment complex, and to the northeast is the neighborhood center area. Existing land use policy is urban neighborhood center, and that's the upper portion of the shape. And then the lower portion is urban neighborhood evolving. I'm sorry. Neighborhood maintenance, my apologies. And then conservation policy remains. Proposed land use is urban neighborhood center and T four N C to expand that, and then urban neighborhood evolving, T four N E. So for community participation, prior to submitting the applications, the applicant met with the council member Benedict and residents of the Berkshire community. There were multiple web meetings and conference calls with the council member and council member Brett Withers as well. There were two in-person meetings with the residents, June twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-one, and July twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-one. There were web meetings and in-person meetings with the South Inglewood Neighborhood Association. There was also a web meeting with the area's school administrators and teachers, District Five a school member. There was outreach to the Rosebank Neighborhood Association. May sixteenth of twenty twenty-two, there was a virtual community meeting held, and also the neighborhood was canvassed between December sixth and January thirteenth of twenty twenty-two for support around the project, and sixty-eight percent of those surveyed supported the project. In addition to community participation, in the early redevelopment discussion, the displacement of existing apartment residents and the difficulty of finding affordable housing option was voiced as a large concern. The Trent Development Group and First Cumberland Properties will transfer existing residents to Berkshire Place, roughly a hundred and ninety-five housing credits to the newly constructed housing development in Madison called Birchstone Village. Within that new development, there includes a pool, large playground, multi-use purpose, court, fitness center, business center, and learning center. There are also a social service center that will offer resources and programming for both children and adults. It is also near the Madison Community Center and Park, and there will be additional affordable housing options at Porter and Kahal for affordable housing inventory needed in the Nashville market. So this is a reminder of the existing conditions. And then this is a view of what's on the ground. So this is looking along Kahal Avenue. This is looking along Porter Road. And this is the view along Straightway Avenue. With Nashville Next Guidance, the concept map shows the policy amendment area designated as neighborhood. Neighborhood areas primarily include residential areas offering a mix of housing types and character, with smaller civic and employment areas and small neighborhood centers. So with T four N C, T four N C policy is applied to areas where there is a concentration of land that is zoned used or intended to be used as mixed-use and commercial. And the intention of T four N E neighborhood evolving is applicable to areas that are zoned residential, where the primary land use is residential or that is envisioned to become primarily residential. Transportation and connectivity, the proposed development access Kahal Avenue, Porter Road, and Straightway Avenue, they are, I'm sorry, Kahal Avenue and Porter Road are are collector avenues. Riverside Drive is an arterial boulevard. And the area, and the area is supported by Wigo. Wigo Route Four, there are four bus stop locations within point two miles east and southeast of the policy site. So amending the community character policy from T four NC and T four NM to T four NC and T four NE is appropriate at this location because it supports a mix of housing types, mixed use center, pedestrian connectivity, including the park and transit. It's supported by the Growth and Preservation Concept Map from Nashville Next and existing public transportation and infrastructure. Staff recommends approval of the expansion of T four Urban Neighborhood Center policy along Cahal Avenue and Porter Road and T four Urban Neighborhood Evolving along Porter Road and Straightway Avenue.
Thank you. So now we're ready for the presentation on fifteen B.
Dustin Shane, staff planner, and I'll present the SP for Porter and Cahal. So same location here, asking for a mixed use development. Our recommendation is to approve if the associated plan amendment is approved and if not, disapprove. Zoning on the site, the upper northeast corner is MUL, the rest is R six right now. Policies, there's a little bit of conservation in the western half where there's some steep slopes. The rest is mostly T four Urban Neighborhood Maintenance. And there's a small piece of neighborhood center at the northeast corner. So here's the site plan they proposed. Looking at the intersection of Cahal, Branch, and Porter, and then north of Straightway Avenue. As you can see, the most intense portion is in the northeast section adjoining where the current neighborhood center is. And then as you move down, you transition down in density and intensity. So this is a mixed use development, eight hundred multifamily units at about forty units an acre, different development types, stacked flats, manor home type, multifamily, townhomes, detached units, thirty-five thousand square foot of commercial, which will be divided between restaurant, retail, and office. For parking, they're providing structured parking on street and then also surface parking that will be hidden from view. And they're not going to exceed the UZO maximum standard. They're providing quite a few public, publicly accessible spaces, gathering spaces, passeos, landscaped areas. And then also that forested slope I mentioned will largely be left intact with trails going through it for the residents. And then also providing an off-site improvement of a crosswalk to the north where there's a park. So here's the development looking west. You can see how it transitions down. You can see the different housing types. We'll just run through the zones real quick. Zone one in the northeast corner, that's the most intense, up to five stories, mixed use. There'll be a step back at that fifth story to blunt that height. You can see through the middle, that's a pedestrian connection with stairs. This is looking at zone one, looking west. You can see that pedestrian avenue up into the site with the stairs, providing a really unique gathering space. Zone two, just to the west, that's going to be similar, mixed use, up to five stories with a step back. Notice in the southern portion, a tiered park area. This is looking south down into zone two from Cahal. And then this is looking like northwest into zone two. You can see that tiered park and gathering area. And then also on the left is clock tower that's in zone three. We worked with the arc, with the applicant on the architecture on that to ensure it fit the neighborhood. Zone three, as you move south, this is a multifamily area, up to four stories, stacked flats. On the right side of the screen, you'll see zone three. That's how it kind of integrates with some of the landscape areas. Zone four, moving up the hill to the west, that'll be kind of manor home style, multifamily stacked flats. And then zone five in the southeastern corner is the least intense. And it's the one that kind of most juts into the existing neighborhood. And it'll be townhomes and detached units. Here's the architecture that they're proposing for zone five. Two new, a new right of way and then an extension of a right of way going through the site, providing connectivity. The purple, the purple area in the middle, that's going to be a festival street. So that's going to be an area that ensures a high level of pedestrian, an enhanced pedestrian experience. You can look here, this is as Andrea point, as Andrea detailed, the extension of the NC policy into zone one and zone two. That's what will cover those zones. So when we reviewed it, we judged that it was consistent with the neighborhood center policy that they're proposing meets not only the needs of the residents that will be moved there, but the existing neighborhood. It's located on prominent collector avenues. They're ensuring good urban design to reduce setbacks, they're hiding the parking. They're doing complete streets with the MCSP and then also with the new streets they're proposing. They're, they're having, providing well-designed public areas and publicly accessible gathering spaces. And then they worked with us to make sure the architecture fit the context and ensure the high level of design. The heights are greater than what's normally allowed in these policies, but the policy has language that greater height can be integrated in if they're meeting certain requirements. And we feel like the, the step backs and the design and the way they're transitioning down meet the policy. And then the T four neighborhood evolving policy, which takes up the southern half, they're providing greater housing choice in a good urban form. So our recommendation is to approve the conditions if the associated plan amendment is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. And so commissioners, we'll open the public hearing on both items. And as a reminder, we'll vote on these separately, but we'll open the, go ahead and open the public hearing on, on both those items. Is the applicant in the room? Come on up. Welcome. And you have ten minutes and you can save two of the ten minutes for rebuttal. Clock is right there. Welcome. State your name and address.
Thank you. Commissioners for letting us speak this afternoon and present. My name is Alex Trent with Trent Development Group. We're a family-owned, affordable housing developer in Nashville. And we're here obviously requesting this SP proposal you've just been presented with. We've been working for this, on this for over two years with Councilwoman Benedict, planning staff, South Inglewood Community, and community leaders like South Inglewood Neighborhood Association. It's an interrelated project. We've got a project called Birchstone Village up in Madison that just broke ground. We've had a unique opportunity to further affordable housing and create new affordable housing options in East Nashville. It began as an effort to revitalize Berkshire Place Apartments. As the residents are our first priority as affordable housing developers. However, the conditions at Berkshire Place Apartments were unsuitable to redevelop that facility or rehab it. So we're proud to say we just broke ground on a two hundred and twenty-eight unit mixed income development in Madison across, or next to Madison Regional Park. It took a large effort to get that, to accomplish that. We had a HUD, approve a HAP transfer, THDA provided bonds. We had a Barnes Award, a CITC loan, pilot from MDHA, and one of the few developments to receive funds from the Amazon Housing Equity Fund. All in partnership with our nonprofit partner, Pathway Lending. This, that facility will have an eleven thousand square foot community center run by Family Affair Ministries, solely dedicated to helping the residents of Birchstone Village and their children through supplemental education programs, tutoring, job training, among others. All expenses, the relocation will be paid for. And we'll have a relocation coordinator assisting that entire effort. We're very excited about Birchstone Village, but we're also extremely excited about what we're here to talk about today, Porter and Cahal. You don't get twenty acres in the heart of East Nashville very often. So we looked at this as an excellent opportunity to add good density, good urban infill development with a thoughtful pedestrian-focused design. We wanted walkable streetscapes, housing options and choices. We want a convenient, practical retail options like a local grocery, coffee shop, maybe a breakfast joint, couple restaurants. You know, we wanted to create the neighborhood center that, that this plan called for that doesn't currently exist. Wanted to bring everyone into this neighborhood or into our development and, and make it feel like it was, has been part of the community for a long time. We wanted to activate the South Inglewood Park and create a better streetscape along the Cahal frontage. We have broad support from the community, Councilwoman Benedict, planning staff, and South Inglewood Neighborhood Association. And we hope to earn your support this afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to speak and I'm going to pass it off onto my design team to get into specifics.
Good evening, commissioners. Scott Morton with Smithy Studio at six oh two Taylor Street. And if I could please kindly request a, a alert at two minutes.
I'll let you know.
Thank you. First of all, I want to sincerely thank the staff, the community, and Council Lady Benedict for all of their engagement and support for this project. It's been, as stated, a robust community engagement period over two years. A plethora of meetings at different scales and different stakeholder groups that has truly created, I think, a better plan for the community. It's what, you know, as a longtime East Nashville resident myself, I obviously enjoy working on projects in my neighborhood, in my backyard. But it's also good to see that the engagement created a better design and a better plan that we think will fit well within the East Nashville community. The feedback, I'm sorry, before I forget, I also want to acknowledge Councilman Withers. We also met with Councilman Withers many times because his district is a budding to ours as well and wanted to get his input along the way. A lot of the feedback from the community really talked about the, the need for housing and the scale. So when we started out, we looked at a lot more density than what we, where we ended up naturally. We've looked at multiple iterations of different plans and design concepts based on the surrounding context. And based on these multiple rounds of feedback, I think that we, and all the revisions that have happened, I think we have a plan that is most context-sensitive, consistent with policy, and will provide better connectivity. And as the client mentioned, will feel like part of East Nashville and like it's always been there. Some of the key features of the design is the mixed use component. And so our major gateway is the two new streets. Our main street off Cahal Avenue will bring people into the site with a double-sided retail experience. And so you'll have wide sidewalks, streetscape, and that retail storefront experience with neighborhood services and other retail opportunities, both for the residents of this development and Nashville, or Greater East Nashville. Furthermore, the project really wanted to look at a very intentional way of transitioning the building types across the site. So we looked at all the context and we wanted to provide a lot of housing choices for the site that could create a diverse amount of housing options, bedroom configurations, and price points ultimately. On the south side, where we're most adjacent to the residential community, we have proposed single-family detached cottages that is most consistent with the scale of the East Nashville community at that location. And then transition in height, scale, and massing, as you continue north into the site to Cahal Avenue, which is our budding edge to South Inglewood Park, which is the major community park for East Nashville. So the, the mixed use component will provide stronger connectivity and frame that park space and provide the density at the right location. A few key features I want to focus on is the network of open spaces that we provided throughout for a variety of experiences. And we listened to the community and provided a lot of different things for different ages and different experiences, both passive and active. Some of these notable open space features include a nature trail in the, the steep-sloped area, strong connectivity of South Inglewood Park with new sidewalks and connectivity and crosswalks that will allow that to be an amenity. A new community park, an amphitheater that will be open for festivals and events. Small plazas spread throughout the development at intersections and along some of the, the focused commercial areas. Courtyards throughout, small parklets. And one of the key features to mention was the festival street, which is intended to be really a street that's privileged to pedestrians, to really bring everything up to a high level of design, a place that we could close down and have a street festival, a neighborhood gathering, and really slow cars down and provide traffic calming and a unique experience.
You're at your two minutes.
Thank you very much. I will wrap it up. Thank you very much. You know, in closing, the proposed design is consistent with the community plan. It's context-sensitive. It'll provide housing choices and much-needed urban residential infill. And we think that it will be a great benefit to the East Nashville community. And I want to, in closing, say that I do support the process we went through. And I would kindly request your support for planning staff's recommendation. Thank you.
All right. Minute and thirty seconds for rebuttal. All right. So anyone wishing to speak in support? Come on up. And so in this section of the, of the hearing, you have two minutes. The timer is right over there. And just state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
I don't think I'll need that long. Brandon Griffith, seven Belle Forest Avenue, President of the South Inglewood Neighborhood Association. I would want to say that personally, I walk the streets around this development and pass out flyers to make sure that the surrounding neighbors were aware of the meetings that the developer was having. So we appreciate that Trent Development had those meetings. They listened to our concerns. We feel like they, they addressed those concerns in those meetings. I mean, generally, I think the community is in support of this. I mean, and we're, we're excited for this development. We're excited for, you know, to see this, this, to see this development. You know, and I would say that, you know, development, for the most part, we know it's going to happen. I mean, there's a lot of development going on in East Nashville. And I mean, we definitely appreciate that they reached out to us. I mean, that doesn't always happen. I mean, developers, a lot of times, can do what they want. I mean, I see that a lot in my neighborhood. So I mean, we appreciate that they reached out and that they are addressing our concerns and, you know, listening to our input for this property. So in general, the South Inglewood Neighborhood Association, we are in support of this development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Come on up. Welcome.
Hi there. Thank you, commissioners. Respectfully, thank you for having me. My name is Christina Mullin. I live at fifteen oh one Porter Road, directly across the street on the south side of this proposal. And just wanted to speak for myself and several other neighbors that live very close to where this proposal is scheduled to happen and just say that everybody is, to confirm what Brandon said, we're super excited. We're looking forward. We hope that you will enthusiastically approve. And so I just wanted to share that with you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I saw, come on up. Welcome.
Hello. My name's Jennifer Alaska. I'm coming at this from a slightly different approach. I'm a licensed contractor in the state of Tennessee. And this particular development really is diverse. It's inclusive. It promotes minority and inclusion. I think that it would be fantastic addition to the East Nashville neighborhood. And I really hope that you all will strongly consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else saying none? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Pam Wallace, and I live at twenty ten Upland Drive. And I also own a property at seventeen oh eight Welcome Lane. And I'm here to say that I am adamantly opposed to this development. The reasons to me and to others are obvious. It's the influx of traffic and congestion in the area. It may be twenty acres, but it is a congested area. Congestion is something that we in Inglewood Congestion is something that we in Inglewood are sort of being smothered by. I know that the word progress is used by developers, that it's a good thing. We should not frown upon development. But I do have one question, and I would like to know, when is enough enough? Will it be when you have to draw a lottery to be able to drive on the streets of Inglewood or pull out onto Gallatin Road from an Inglewood side street? I personally witnessed, not a very long time ago, from the CVS parking lot at the corner of Gallatin Road and Cahal, 18 cars deep, and I know because I counted, trying to turn left, waiting on the green light to turn left onto Gallatin Road. So if you add an additional 700 to 800 more vehicles, just a mile or so on that same street, what could it possibly be like? Is my time up?
Time flies when you're having fun.
Yes, it is. And I'm so sorry. I didn't get to say everything, but it's just too much. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Time does go faster when you're speaking. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Saying none? One minute and 30 second rebuttal. I know that might be hard for us to... Hold on, though. Hold on one second. Okay, we'll buzz you in. It's one minute, minute and 30 seconds.
I will be brief. Chairman, thank you so much. I just wanted to briefly add some detail on traffic. A traffic study was conducted for this project and approved by Metro, I'm sorry, NDOT, excuse me, which does provide for the traffic improvement requirements and recommendations. There's been the off-site improvements, both near and away from the site, that will help mitigate the impact of any new residential development on this network. But the volume and capacity has been reviewed and approved by NDOT. And we also, I think, have a great benefit of being on a major transit corridor as well, which we hope will be a way to reduce vehicular traffic and behavior in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now, our council lady, you want to come? Welcome, council lady.
I'm the one that gets all the time, right?
As much time as you want.
Great. My kickoff was last night, and I took a little long, so I'll try to be quick here today. This is, to me, one of the proudest moments that I have had as a council member because we have worked on this for three years. This was leaked to The Post in 2020, in the summer of 2020 during COVID, and the developer reached out to me immediately and said, "This is just a plan. It's just an idea." And I said, "Well, let's talk about the residents that live there today." Because that's the first thing we're going to talk about, is that we've got 195 Section 8 eligible apartments, and those are District 7 residents. These are my constituents, and I need to make sure that they are well-cared-for, that whatever happens on these 20 acres, that they land safely and softly where they want to be. There was a commitment from the start that that will happen. We've continued to see that. I've continued to see that from the owner of the property, from Trent Development Group. They are an affordable housing organization as it is, so this is in their wheelhouse. They own the development next door, Bellwood Apartments. I think it's Bellwood Terrace. I don't know why I don't know the name of it right now. But they own that, and that also has an affordability to it as well. We have had five community meetings I personally have held or been at, including the two with the existing residents. As was stated in the developer's presentation, they have held additional community meetings. Every time that I called them and said, "You need to talk to that person," they called them and talked to that person. And I said, "You need to go talk to them again." And they said, "Emily, we've done that." They didn't say, "Emily, the councilwoman, we've done that." I said, "I want to hear from them again, one more time, what their feedback is." We have, the reason why there's only one person here in opposition today is because we've done a superb job listening to the community and adjusting. I've done what I can to adjust to that, and the developer has made adjustments as well. They also took feedback from planning, and so this was deferred one time before it was filed. I think it was, it was, I don't remember if it was deferred here or not, but it was looked at by planning again to make some changes to it, to make it fit the neighborhood well. This is an area that is now within the UZO. It is an area that has become more urban and that people, what folks have asked me for in the neighborhood, and this is an email that I've sent out, a billion emails and social posts about this, it seems. One of the things that I wrote is some important things that people have shared with me in the district over the past few years. Build high-density housing on transit lines and closest to our corridor streets and pikes. Create neighborhood destinations with more restaurant and retail locations. Build safer streets with protected bike lanes and sidewalks. Activate South Inglewood Park and build affordable housing units. So I've talked about this development, how much I like this development. I want to talk about affordable housing in just one second. But with this slide-up, one of the things that came up just now is traffic. As we all know, we hear about traffic a lot in the city that's rapidly developing in some areas. If you see that little triangle that's outside of the development area, that is a convenience store today, and I have been working and connecting the developer with the owner of that to see if we can get that purchased and gifted to the city to put in a traffic circle. That triangle is a very dangerous triangle today. There's a street to the north of it that's outside of this picture that has prevented us from putting a three-way stop in. I've been out there with the director of NDOT, and we can't seem to get it together, to figure out how to fix it right now. Getting that land and the fact that they're willing to work with the owner of that to purchase that land and the fact that they're having this conversation with us, will it happen? I think it will. Is it certain? No, it's not. But that's going to be a huge value to the neighborhood, especially as you go deeper into the neighborhood here. One thing that's interesting is the woman who spoke in opposition, her address is in an area where we just passed, you just passed a contextual overlay. And what's so cool about District 7, what people have asked me to do, is build density out towards Gallatin Pike, build density where it's urban, and make sure back here, deep in the neighborhood, we're protecting the character and the historic nature of the neighborhood. That's exactly what we're doing here with this development. We are within seven tenths of a mile, actually a seven-minute walk, not seven tenths of a mile, a seven-minute walk to Gallatin Pike, which is Route 56 on Wego, second highest ridership in the city. I take that bus all the time to the courthouse. Now, what I want to talk about is the affordability piece. They plan to build up to 800 market-rate apartments and townhomes, a local grocery store. Sorry, I got off track there. Okay, so when I spoke with, I'm going to forget my notes because I know this by heart. We've worked so hard on it. My largest concern was the kids that go here, so we got in touch with the school principals immediately. We talked with them about the kids that live there. We met with the residents. Some of the residents are stoked to move to the new development in Madison. They, the location that they're in is not important to them as much as the quality of life where they live. What they, the buildings they're in today are functionally obsolete. They are concrete buildings. Everything would have to be done with conduit. There's no way that these buildings could be brought to today's standards. Some folks are really excited to get to the new location. It's right next to another. It's next to a park. It's just great. But there are also residents who want to stay in South Inglewood. So that's been my focus from the start. How can we help those residents who want to stay in South Inglewood stay in South Inglewood? They are, there's an Affordable Housing Pilot payment in lieu of taxes that we passed at council, that Councilmember Allen sponsored. I was a co-sponsor of. And what it does is it allows us to do tax abatement. So I know that you can't make your decisions because the state has tied your hands in regards to affordable housing, but one of the things that we're looking at doing, and the developer and I have worked on this, talked about this, and they're willing to do it too. Today, we earn about, we bring in about $80,000 worth of tax revenue from this site that's based on the assessed value that the assessor provides. Once this is approved, it's going to provide over $2 million worth of tax revenue to the city. $80,000 today, $2 million later. What we do through this tax abatement, this pilot program, is that we give back X number of dollars in order to create a certain number of affordable units. That formula is a part of that pilot legislation. It gets approved by the Health and Ed Board, so it does have review from an independent board and commission. And what we would do there is we would be able to replace the number of affordable units so that whoever wants to stay can stay, potentially add even more affordable units. And also, we will still be increasing the property tax revenue that we get. That $2 million isn't going to just all go away. We're still going to, in the formula that we've done, more than triple the revenue that we get today, and quite likely even more. $2 million, in my opinion, is a very low estimate of what this will bring. So I think I said I would talk for a very brief time, but those are the pieces, to me, that were most important, and this is broadly supported. I've only heard one voice of opposition, and that was here today. We've addressed everybody's concerns throughout, and so I hope that, I look forward to your discussion about this. I am excited about bringing this to the neighborhood. I think it's going to be really good for the future of the neighborhood and also for the existing residents there. Thank you.
Thank you, council lady. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. The vice chair usually sits there. Y'all switch me up. Commissioner Tibbs, you should go first, and we'll get the vice chair. He should go next. Commissioner Tibbs.
Okay, okay. I wasn't sure. You confused me. I also agree. I think this is a well-conceived and thought-through plan. I think also hearing the councilperson's, such the community involvement and talk through it, that gives a lot more comfort, even the support that showed up here today. So I agree. I think it was well-thought-through. I had a couple of questions. Maybe staff can answer. Not that it's a big, like I have a big issue with it, but how were the heights determined? I noticed, and I'm assuming just because they were smaller, like in Zone 5, they're 45 feet, then it goes all the way up, did this have anything, was this strictly based off of the building type? Or was it, is it, you know, the terrain, or, you know, just, can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, so you're asking how it was determined, the different heights for the zones?
Exactly. It went from like 45 to 60, and then the Zone 1 and 2, I think, were 75.
Yeah, I think they just based that off, you know, their estimates for what, you know, how they wanted their floors to be. They also, like I said, that was one of our issues with the first iteration, was the buildings were kind of towering over the street. And so we had a big meeting. Councilwoman Benedict was at, and we all talked about it and kind of came down on tightening up the design using step backs, stepping down the height more. And the plan they came back with basically implemented that.
Okay. That would be the, oh, go ahead.
I was going to add, too, that you're, that the buildings are taller sort of at the intersection of the two roads where you've got intersection of sort of really primary streets. And so it's taller, and then it's moving down as you transition into the neighborhood. And so you've got more intense policy with the neighborhood center at that corner, which can accept more height, and especially given the classification of the streets, and then it's transitioning down.
Okay. I kind of assumed something similar to that, but I just wanted to make sure just because of the contextual, didn't want to have something that wasn't, you know, that was sensitive to that. So that's why I was curious to make sure that that was thought through as far as height. Otherwise, that was the only question I had. Vice Chair.
Hopefully, we're okay. Thank you, and thank you to the council lady for all that additional information. I think it's definitely an exciting project, and it is very much an underutilized space. You know, when I first saw this project and the address of this project, my first thought was exactly what the council lady indicated, which is what's going to happen to all of the residents living there. That's one of East Nashville's longest-standing, often problematic, affordable housing projects, but 200 Section 8 vouchers are not going to be, or Section 8 recipients are not going to be easily relocated. I know we cannot make any decisions based on the affordability, but I guess just for my own peace of mind, is there a sense that this is a one-to-one replacement for the, I guess this is a question for the applicant, is it a sense of a one-to-one replacement of the housing units? And do existing residents have a first rider refusal or right to return to the new housing?
Come on up to the, and turn the microphone on. Thank you. There we go. Can you hear me? So as I've mentioned, the process to develop affordable housing is exhaustive. We probably had 10 partners in three years to put together Birchstone Village, but that's what we do for a living. So absolutely, if I can put affordable housing here, if we can make that work, which the Mixed Income Pilot was a massive step in the right direction, and that's our plan, is to have a mixed-income community here, yes. And if the direct question of a one-to-one replacement, and if they want to stay, yes, we've committed to do that as well.
I mean, I hope that, I know there aren't that many other projects like this available left in Nashville, but I just hope for other developers that find this kind of opportunity, that they can see this as a model of really trying to do the right thing for the residents who are living there and have been living there for many decades. I think it's a very exciting project. It will be wonderful if the Dollar General store can get integrated into this to create some traffic calming. It is going to create more traffic. I know Porter and Eastland can get congested. I know down Cahal can get congested. Straightway gets pretty narrow. It stretches. But, you know, at least there are multiple ways to get in and out of this property. And, you know, hopefully, this will provide greater support for mass transit down the road. And certainly, Gallatin is the place where that will make sense. So I think it's a really exciting plan, and I applaud the developers for all that went into this. As an East Nashville resident, I saw a lot of chatter on the East Nashville listserv and the East Nashville Facebook page about this project. Lots of concerns a year ago, two years ago. The fact that we only had one opponent, and in fact, the letters are all in support of the project really says a lot, so I'm excited to provide my support for this.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackshear.
I agree with my fellow commissioners about this project just being so well-thought-out. I appreciate the community engagement. The color you gave council lady was great to help us understand a little bit more about the history of the project and how so many iterations have been done in order to kind of address all the concerns, whether it be the affordability concern, obviously the traffic concern, and then just how this project can be integrated successfully in the community. And it is, I mean, does speak volumes, the fact that this is such a big project and there's only one person here to speak out against it. To follow up on the one person's concerns, which were traffic-based. So the traffic study has not been completed. Is that right? It has been completed. Okay.
Yes, traffic study was completed, and their conditions of approval included in the staff report related to a traffic study, which also includes some off-site improvements.
Okay, so I was looking through the analysis, and it looked like it wasn't completed, but that there were minimum requirements that the developer were going to have to meet. So is what is listed in the analysis as the minimum improvements, is that final? Are those the total list of improvements that would be to be made? I'm just trying to understand the universe of traffic improvements that will be made.
Yeah, and maybe the applicant would want to speak a little bit more to this, but the plant, the study was submitted, and there were a few tweaks that have to be made, is my understanding, but NDOT has come out with all of their mitigation conditions that they put in the conditions there.
Yeah, why don't we get the applicant to answer?
Okay. I don't want to, like, ask you to tell me all the very, like, minute details. I'm sure you would love to do that. But in broad strokes, I guess, what are the traffic improvements that will be made in connection with the project?
My name's Josh Rolland. I'm with Kim Lee-Horn, part of the applicant's team. We have a, we, as an applicant, we've agreed to all of NDOT's recommendations and requirements associated with the traffic study. We have quite a few onsite improvements, which are the widening of Straightway, the widening of Porter, the widening of Cahal, adding detached sidewalks, some additional shared bike lane striping. We also have off-site improvements at Riverside. Pedestrian safety improvements include- Pedestrian safety improvements, including safety zones for crosswalks. You know, there's a median drive at Riverside, so there's off-site improvements. There's other signal timing and upgrades at Gallatin, so it's, it's very comprehensive, and we've agreed to do everything that NDOT has required.
I appreciate that, and I'm, obviously, there are going to be cars that come along with the project, but hopefully, the neighbor who is in opposition can have some comfort knowing that there are going to be tremendous traffic improvements made in connection with the project.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes. Sorry. So, the Neighborhood Street Calming Program, Cahal, is on that list as well. So, we expect at some point, some traffic calming measures to take place between Porter Road and Gallatin Pike as well.
Now, what, I'm just curious, what would those traffic calming measures consist of?
I think we'll see a stop sign at the corner of Scott and Cahal, which is needed to slow folks down. I think we'll also get some speed humps along the way. There is a fire station there, but the today's speed humps were great for the broader widths of ambulances and fire trucks. So, I think we may see some speed humps. I also think that we have the opportunity to work with NDOT to improve the traffic lights at Carolyn and Cahal and Gallatin Pike. There's not really a need for the staggered lights that are there today, in my opinion, based on the traffic that comes from the west side of Gallatin. So, I think that we have an opportunity to improve that, which will also help with the concern in regards to traffic pulling out on the Gallatin Pike.
Awesome. Thanks, Council Lady.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. As previously stated, we, as a commissioner, cannot approve or disapprove based on affordability. However, I think it's okay to make comment. And I would like to thank-
Commissioner, now, I will tell you, you've got to be real careful on comments.
Yes. I will be very careful. I just want to thank Council Lady-
We'll get in trouble with our lawyer. Okay.
And development team, the commitment. It is so nice to hear from the beginning how they're committed to displacing existing residents. And I think we are assured, and I think we do have a tool to make affordability work, so that I think our policy and tool is working. This project is evidence of that. So, that's a comment. I hope I'm not in trouble. So, with that, I think this is a really great, reflecting a community voice. The one thing, it's a different type of building and design, and then height differences blend into good with existing single-family housing. So, I think overall, it is a great, well-thought-out plan. And I think one thing, you know, traffic and congestion is always a challenge. However, if you put essential within the development, such as coffee shop, some grocery nearby, it will reduce the need to go out of development, therefore, it will kind of help congestion in a way. Of course, you know, morning and evening, those added traffic cannot be avoided, but with mass transit, utilizing mass transit, that will be, in the future, we can think about better transition within and within the community. So, all these things are well-thought-out, this plan, so I'm very happy to support this staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelsman.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to try not to repeat a lot of things that were said earlier, but do you want to give maybe a little bit of history for this area? Obviously, Porter Road and Riverside, Riverside's arterial, Porter, Porter, Cahal is a collector. Just prior to Nashville Next, but when Councilmember Anthony Davis was the councilman for District 7, when we had the old system that we had before, they used the Community Character Manual. But there, there was an early effort at that time to sort of expand what today we would call the Neighborhood Center out from that corner, a little bit to the west towards this intersection. And Councilmember Anthony Davis supported that when he was working with the South Inglewood Neighborhoods at the time, community supported it. And so, that began this process of extending that Neighborhood Center from that intersection out this way. One of the things that, like I said, that was during the 2011 to 2015 time period, a little bit before Nashville Next, but I would say, unfortunately, some of the infill that happened in that, in that stretch really continued to underutilize the site. So, you had some buildings that were constructed that did not meet the residential housing scale of the community. You had short-term rental infiltration a little bit there. So, that effort to sort of expand commercial uses right around that major node have been a little bit underutilized, I think, by some of the private property owners in that time, even prior to Nashville Next. So, when Nashville Next happened, we've continued those discussions with the community, both for, at the corner of Riverside and Porter, it was a former church facility that is now an event center, which I think is a great rehabilitation of that. But again, still, you, you kind of come around the corner, and it's still very underutilized. Porter Road has, I would say, just a little bit of a hodgepodge character. You have some really cool kind of log cabin homes that are still left. There are major apartment buildings. There are single-family homes. You have just a lot of different things on there. And one of the things that I really like about this plan is that it, it really does provide some of that commercial that the neighborhood really has been looking for, for, I would say, 15 years, to add some services in that community, where they would have a coffee shop or restaurants or things that they could walk to. But also provides, I think, a really good sense of cohesiveness to a really long stretch of Porter, as you, as you come down toward, toward my neighborhood at Greenwood, where we have some infill going in. So, I think that's, that's something really that I want to speak well of the applicants, as well as of staff, as of thinking about, you know, if you drive down that street today, there isn't any character that you would identify that it has, but this provides a nice transition, still focuses most of the height and intensity at that northeast corner, where the community's been looking at adding commercial for about 15 years now, and has a much more residential feel as you get down to Straightway. Straightway is the boundary between 6 and 7, and so that's why we appreciate the team reaching out to me about that. Straightway Avenue itself also is very, very narrow. It does connect to Gallatin. However, it does lack sidewalks. There are some topography issues. Most of it has culvert. It's very, very narrow to begin with. So, it's a street where there's just, it's, I mean, it's, we have a high demand for neighbors, and they have a lot of infill for adding sidewalks there, but it mostly is not a, a street where NDOT has felt that it would be constructable. And so, I think, you know, again, adding the sidewalk improvements and things that are on Straightway is something that my constituents on Straightway called me immediately when this went to the press and said, please do this, because this, this may be the only way that we get sidewalks. But I also think that, you know, again, even for those neighborhoods, it gives them, they, they, you know, can walk through the site and access a lot of, a lot of really good things. For, we go the number four route, has very high ridership along Shelby Avenue itself. Once you come in, in through the interior of the Lockton Springs neighborhood and through Eastwood and up into South Inglewood, that ridership tapers quite a bit. So, I think this development, also very thoughtfully, provides some future ridership, I hope, for the number four. A few years ago, I'd worked with NDOT, and we redid some of the bike lanes, in particular, along Porter Road, a little bit further to the south of this, between Eastland and Greenwood. We actually created some parking-protected bike lanes, which was kind of new at the time. Folks have finally gotten used to that a little bit. We've added three crosswalks further down in that area. Those have been really well-received by neighbors. And so, again, I really think that this, having this much of a stretch of frontage along Porter, just north of that, really helps to make that street much, much more cohesive and pedestrian-friendly and hopefully transit-friendly than it has been for a long time. And just wanting to reiterate again, that this is, overall, is something that the East Nashville community has been looking at since long before Nashville Next. So, I'm excited to see it develop with a lot of feedback from the community and from the staff as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Commissioner Henley.
Thank you, Chair. Well, one, first, I want to thank the council members both on the stand with us and coming here. The details and context for the plan, I think, it really is helpful. I also want to commend the developer, the developer and the development team, the commitment, the extensive communication, the, the use of tools. It's, I think it's just really important, as a city, that when we create tools to help incentivize development in the way that we want to see happen around our city, there are projects like this that are stewarded and guided well, and do become models for, for how to utilize those tools. I think, you know, it's just a great testament to the amount of work and commitment to the residents. Again, the amount of time that it took to get to this point, having residents in mind and having them at the beginning of the process is something that I want to also highlight. And then working with staff, I think, you know, it sounds like there was a couple of iterations of what we're seeing now, a lot of improvements along the way. And again, you know, the comments that we heard in opposition were related to traffic and congestion. We heard quite a bit about the amount of improvements that are, that are there. Just reviewing, you know, the staff report, I mean, there's an extensive amount of conditions from NDOT, and it sounds like there's some continuing work to be done there. So, I think, with all that said, I mean, it gives me a lot of confidence that the effort that's to this point, to get, to get here, has, has been great and, and should be commended. And I think we shouldn't, we shouldn't anticipate anything less as we go forward. So, I'm, I'm excited to give my support to the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Haines.
So, it sounds like this is a love fest. But being a developer, we are guilty of being impatient, and to take three years and do this correct, the entire team, and including the council lady, need to be commended. I, I will ask a question regarding the park across the street. Council Lady, what condition is Inglewood Park currently in? And my, my sense is that two to three years of construction on this 20-acre site is going to, going to stress that park.
Great question. So, Director Odom and I have been talking about that park almost since this came about. So, it is currently in the CIB to become a regional, and so, the goal would be to, to get it there, but the, it's in, it's in great shape. It's a, we actually recently had a new playground put in by a nonprofit that donated the, all the equipment. The inside of the center, they're remodeling one of the rooms for after-school for kids. We were able to just get that done for about $3,000 of 4% funds. So, it's, it's, it's ready.
So, the one idea I would throw at to you and the applicant, given the stress it's going to go under, and given that he's got a landscaped 20 acres, would it be possible to throw out a public-private landscaping-maintenance agreement and ask the developer and the applicant to consider that? I, I think tying the beauty and green space of this 20 acres with some improvements to Inglewood Park, Parks doesn't have enough money, as we know, and if that's something the applicant would consider, I think that would be a really good idea.
I love that idea. And we've talked about pickleball and adding pickleball courts, so that, as you know, is very popular, and so they did say to me that they would be able to put pickleball in some of their recreation space. That would be, all of this is open to the public. So, none of this is private space. These are going to be streets that are given to the city. And so, the, now, the park space will be privately held, but it is open to the public.
As you continue to carry this bill through, council, to consider a public-private landscape-maintenance agreement for Inglewood Park-
You got it?
Would be a huge win.
I'm going to write it down. Can I add one thing, because I forgot to say this, but Brandon Griffith, who is the president of the South Inglewood Neighborhoods Association, is the one who came up with the bill that you passed on consent in regards to NES meters. So, just, I wanted to give him a shout-out, because that was very good work and idea on his part, totally aside from-
That's out of order, but we'll allow it.
Thank you.
So, one other thing out of order that we did on the recent development next to Salvation Army, is we sort of said, let's do a postmortem. And I'd love to challenge, Council Lady, you and the developer, to do a postmortem on how this all happened. We need to learn from this in this city. The development community needs to learn from this and try to, try to model future projects after this.
Thank you for, thank you for that. And they do have that to some degree already. So, what happened was that during this process, the development down in District 5 was going on, and I believe at that meeting, you said, this is how things should be done and presented and engaged with. And I said to the, this team, that's what's going to happen when we come in front of the planning commission, and so I'm really thrilled that that's the case today. We vetted all of that stuff and made sure this was a good fit for the community, overwhelming support for that. So, definitely, I'm glad to do that as well. Thank you.
So, with that, I will make a motion to approve 15A. That's a proper motion. And second, any other discussion?
Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Ayes have it? 15A is adopted.
I'll, I'll continue and make a motion to approve 15B with all the conditions from staff.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Pose no? Ayes have it? Council Lady, great work. Thank you. We don't, we don't clap or yell. You know that. All right. Moving on. So, Commissioners, we have a special request from Council Lady Tomes. She has to go to the Minority Caucus, and so, I know this would be going in front of other council members, and I don't want to upset anybody. But Commissioners, it's item 26, 26, right? It would be item 26. So, we would need to have a motion to take item 26 out of order before item 21. Council Lady, would that be okay with you? Okay. So, we'll need a motion to take item 26 next. There's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Pose no? Ayes have it? We'll take 26 next before item 21. Item 26. Sorry, sometimes we do this. We really try to be accommodating. Thank you, Council. So, we, oftentimes, we do ask this, on item 26, is the person in opposition still here? Oh, oh, it's John Michael. Okay.
Request to rezonate property from CL to CLNS. Skip, it's a missing one. Anyway, it consists of two properties. It's approximately 6.9 acres in size. The properties are currently vacant. The proposed zoning is commercial, or the existing zoning is commercial limited. It permits a variety of commercial uses, also light office uses. The proposed zoning is commercial limited, no short-term rentals. While the proposed, or the existing CL zoning district permits, and mostly, commercial zoning, it does permit, with conditions adaptive reuse, so it would permit residential as well at this location. This is in the Bordeaux White Creek Haynes Trendy Community Plan. Policies are conservation, industrial, and urban community center. Conservation is intended to protect environmentally sensitive areas. In this case, the site has some steep slopes. Industrial is intended to maintain, enhance, create industrial districts, and urban community center is intended to maintain, enhance, create urban community centers that contain commercial mixed-use and institutional land uses with residential land uses, mixed-use buildings, and serving in transitioning to adjoining community policies. Since the proposed commercial limited, no short-term rental zoning is consistent with the existing CL zoning district, with the exception that it does not permit short-term rentals. Staff has no issues with proposed zoning district. Recommends approval.
Thank you. So, Commissioners, we'll open-
Hello again. So this one, it's always a difficult position to be in as a council member when you have constituents who are on opposite sides of an issue. You know, the property owner, as a property owner in District Two is also my constituent in the development group. It's a good team of folks, and they've done some good projects in the city. But with this particular project, it's been a vacant lot, two vacant lots for quite a while. Maybe, I don't know if anything's ever been on that lot. Right next door to the two lots is a neighborhood that's been around for decades. And so it was a surprise to everyone when this project popped up for 66 units. And of course, you know, it's a commercial property, they're allowed to do the adaptive residential use. So we understand that they can build a right, the 66 units. However, there is no entitlement to do short-term rentals, which would just, I can't talk today, which would essentially make this area, this project, a hotel, which would greatly inconvenience the neighborhood next door. There's a small street, Dennis Drive, which would have to be shared with the 66-unit project. There's already a lot of unnecessary traffic on Dennis Drive. There's already, you know, an inconvenience to the neighbors there and difficulty in using Dennis Drive, and so this would add to that. This is, again, going back to my philosophy of preserving historic and established neighborhoods. This is an established neighborhood. There are some homes in that neighborhood that go back to, I believe, the 50s and 60s. And so this is just a matter of being fair to the residents who've already been there. The development team still gets to do their project, the 66 units. Again, there's no vested interest or entitlement to be able to do short-term rentals. There's no dwelling units on the property right now. It's just vacant lots. And so this is trying to, you know, protect the neighborhood that's next to it by prohibiting short-term rentals and having these longtime neighbors essentially living next door to a hotel.
Thank you, council lady. And we'll obviously reserve your time at the end. Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in support, come on up. And welcome. And you have two minutes, and please state your name and address for the record. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dr. Tanya Dennis. Clearly, it's a little personal for me. Dennis Drive is named after my grandfather, who was the first licensed African-American masonry contractor here in Davidson County. Hume Falk High School, Bell Need, the original downtown, my grandfather. From my driveway, I am the third-generation resident on Dennis Drive. My parents are here, and my grandparents lived on Dennis Drive. I am new construction. I'm at 417 Dennis Drive. From my driveway to the property line for this development, it is less than 30 feet. In essence, what we're asking as neighbors, we are on dead-end streets, and that is a concern for safety, and also if we had to evaluate senior members of our community. What is most important is that I drove through downtown today, Lower Broad. Lower Broad would be at our front doors. We look at just the Titans, different events that are here in the city. And that is not, we're very quiet, and we'd like for it to remain that way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Make sure we get everybody. Come on up. Welcome.
Sorry, is that somebody off?
No, you didn't. Come on up. Welcome.
Hey, my name is Seth Tedwell. I live at 437 Dennis Drive. I'm here to support not allowing them turning these 67, 66 townhomes into Airbnbs across the street from me. I purchased my house, I live a couple houses down from Ms. Dennis. I purchased my house, my first house that I moved in a little over a year ago. I bought this property to invest in my future here in Nashville, Tennessee. I was born and raised in Bill, Tennessee. It's my first house, and I was purchased, and I was excited to live there. And now we're being told that right across the street from us, within 30 feet of my driveway, they're putting in 66 townhomes. Not excited about that. I realize it's out of order to talk about that whole process. We weren't really consulted a lot on the, they don't want to use our road and some issues there. I realize that we're arguing about the short-term rentals currently, but there's been some other issues that I would love to have addressed at some point, if we could do that. I don't know how this process works. Again, a first-time home buyer, so I'm a little new to all this. But I'm really not excited that they are able to come in and put 66 townhomes across the street from me and then turn it into essentially a business where I'm living 30 feet away from them. And let's say, you know what? I want to be an investor too. If that's what they can do, then I want a short-term list, my house. I want to put my home up for an Airbnb and make money off of it. If that's what they're doing in our community, I can't do that, yet I live 30 feet across the street from them. So you're going to give these people coming from out of town and let them, since you run a business across the street from me, whereas I'm told, just deal with the nonsense, but I can't do that in my house because literally 30 feet across the street, it's not allowed to short-term rent. So I would love for it to be explained to me how it's possible that this is allowed, how this is good for the community if this is approved. And then again, if it's okay to have this addressed by perhaps the builders or anybody that's here, any information they can give on the access point, the road they're wanting to use, any traffic studies they did, and how they generated the amount of cars that were used. So if they did a traffic study and they said, hey, we're going to do X amount of cars based on this traffic study, are they basing that on them expecting it to be Airbnbs or long-term rentals? And where did that information come from? I know my time is up, but we've really been given very little information about this. So if you could really discuss this, and even if Ms. Toomes could get up here, the neighborhood is really being.
Sir, thank you.
Okay.
Two minutes.
Again, new to this.
We'll definitely talk about it in.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Welcome.
Councils, my name is Cheryl Mitchell. I live at 457 Dennis Drive. My family has been at that residence for 54 years. I was six years old when I moved from Hartsford, Tennessee to Nashville, Tennessee. The proposal for Airbnbs is not accepted in our community because of all the traffic on a one-lane street. Our street don't even have dividers. It's just one lane. And when emergency vehicles come up to that street, they have to pull in and they have to back out. They can't even turn around on Dennis Drive. So all the traffic from 66 Airbnbs would greatly affect our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Come on up, sir. Welcome.
My name is Medrick Dennis. I'm Dr. Tanya Dennis's father. We've been on that land for 70 years. My father and I cut Dennis Drive 69 years ago with a pickaxe and a shovel, and it was a gravel road. And it was designed to be a private road for the Dennis family. Of course, as time went on, it was widened and worked, and it acquired the name Dennis Drive because we did cut that road years ago. And we feel like that we are being stuffed, in which we'd be more traffic. Now, I have a question. I was always under the impression or the understanding that nothing could be built under the power-power TVA lines. They cut through that property that they're talking about building on. So I just don't, I'm lost for words. Now they're coming in and saying they want to build these units. How can they do it now? That land has been empty for years because the TV power lines run straight through it. So that's my question.
We'll get an answer, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, now we're ready for any opposition. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Welcome.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, staff. My name is John Michael. I'm an attorney with the Thompson Burton Law Firm here in Nashville, 1801 West End Avenue. Shortest purchase, my clients have purchased and are in the process of developing this property. It is, as has been correctly noted, being developed under the Adaptive Residential Development Ordinance in the Metro Code of Laws. And there is an intention to pursue short-term rental permits, which of course can't even be pursued until the use and occupancy permits are issued for the individual residential units. However, understanding that Council Member Toomes, who has been, as per her custom, wonderful to work with throughout this project and others in her district for this particular builder group, the conversations made it plain to us that she intended to pursue NS zoning for this property, which would of course not allow short-term rentals. However, our project in December of 2022 was approved with its final site plan and therefore in conformity with state law under Title 13 of the TCA, as well as the 2014 resolution from the Metro Council that allows final site plan approval as a basis by which a project can become vested, not just in the bulk regulations affecting a project, but also the land uses allowed that are already vested on that. So that's not the fault of anyone. This was always the intent for the project. This is what the design expenditures went into, the purchase price went into. It is correctly noted that nobody chose to pursue this for a long time because there were challenges associated with the lot, including TVA lines, including the proximity of the interstate, including floodplain to the far west of these two lots. However, in modern Nashville, it doesn't matter if you've got an octagon-shaped lot with no road frontage, an Indian burial ground in the backyard, and a historic overlay on the whole thing, people will eventually find a way to try to make a project. That's what's happened here. We oppose the NS because we're already vested in it, doesn't make any difference. Roadways will be whatever the government, namely NDOT, tells us to do, and we will continue to communicate with the council member in furtherance of the project. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Yes, my name is Brent Smith. I'm the developer of the property. And first of all, I'd like to thank y'all for being here, and I'd like to thank Ms. Toomes for all that she's done. And Ms. Dennis, we've met with the neighborhood groups a couple of times. This is unusual for me because we're not asking for this rezoning. We don't want to rezone the property. We're happy with what it is. Even in spite of that, we've met with the neighborhood groups. We've addressed their concerns, and we understand the traffic issue on Dennis Drive. We did a traffic study on our own, wasn't required, spent the money to do that, sent that to Mr. Tedwell, never heard any comments back from him. We've met with the neighborhood groups a couple of times. We readjusted our design. We took one entrance out. We only have one entrance on the drive now. We've done everything by the rules. We followed the rules on this. Before we bought the property, we did our due diligence. We looked at all the zoning. We looked at everything on this. And that's why we're kind of taken aback by this, that all of a sudden, when you follow the rules, you do everything you're supposed to do, and then all of a sudden, somebody can come in and change the rules on you after the game, after you're already in the game. So that's kind of one of our concerns. The other concern is, the last couple of meetings we've had with Dr. Dennis and her attorney, there was an attorney involved with the neighborhood group, we left there with the impression, in fact, comments were, hey, we appreciate all that you've done for this. You know, we're improving the property. Yes, it was a vacant land. When we bought it, there were encampments on the property. There were all different kinds of things going on. But on top of that, this is a commercial piece of property. If you're ever wanting to do short-term rental or any type of thing, isn't this the place to do it, right next to a hotel? Other hotels, you've got I-65 on one side and arterial. I'm about to run out of time here, but I'm opposed to short-term rentals in neighborhoods that destroy a real estate market. We understand that. That's why this, to me, is the ideal place to do it. We just want to, like I said, follow the rules that we laid out, that were laid out.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, rebuttal? Council lady?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, there is no right to have a short-term rental. Short-term rental permits are tied to dwelling units. There are no dwelling units on this property. It's just two empty lots. There's no guarantee that, there's a process in order to obtain a short-term rental permit. There's no guarantee that you will have a short-term rental permit. So there's no vested interest in a future, somewhere down the line, short-term rental permit. You've heard from the neighbors, there is an established neighborhood right next to this property. It goes against the character of the neighborhood. Yes, there are some hotels in the area, but however, two of the hotels in the area are being converted to long-term rental apartments. So there is a move for this particular area to move towards more long-term housing options rather than having hotel housing options. And this essentially puts a hotel right next to a quiet residential neighborhood that has been a quiet residential neighborhood for decades. And so that's why I'm asking you to approve the rezon request. It fits with the land use policy. I'm asking you to approve adding the NS designation. Thank you.
Thank you, council lady. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And this is an interesting case, for sure. Let me consult with our attorney real quick. So we're on to discussion. And so there's potentially some legal questions that are out there. And so commissioners, if you would, if you have the questions, let's go through our normal process. And then by the end of it, if we don't feel comfortable, we may have to end up deferring this to get a more in-depth legal opinion. But let's go ahead and have the hearing, see what other questions pop up. Because from all the commissioners, I always get more questions, and we kind of go through it, and so we can learn from each other. Commissioner Haynes, you want to go first?
No, but you're coming my way anyway. So councilor, speak to the vesting that John Michael referenced with the site plan approval, and is it really a vesting process with short-term rentals? Or is it a vesting process with the zoning that allows short-term rentals under a one-year permit only?
That's what we're discussing right now, and I'm looking at some stuff. So if that's your only question, then hold that for a thought for a second, please.
But Commissioner, it might be helpful for Lisa to describe, just remind everybody how the STR permits are issued, because I think you're raising that, and maybe for the public record, that might be.
Well, and just real quickly, for the developer, I mean, shame on you for buying this on a one-year permit and going to go build short-term rentals, and then that permit can be revoked after a year. It seems sort of foolish. So Lisa, am I correct that a short-term rental permit can be not renewed and revoked after a year?
So just to talk about a little bit on how short-term rental permits or short-term rentals work. When you go to file a building permit or master permit with the codes department, you are filing to build multifamily or single-family. You don't get a building permit to build a short-term rental. A short-term rental is a use permit that is issued only after a use and occupancy permit has been issued. So in other words, you don't apply for or get a short-term rental permit until after a residential unit has been constructed. And so you would never go in to file a permit to build a short-term rental. You may have designed something to ultimately be a short-term rental, but you would be getting a building permit, for instance, to build a multifamily building. After it's built and all inspections have taken place, and you've got a use and occupancy permit saying that you can occupy, then you would file a use permit to get a short-term rental permit.
And so what discretion does the department have when that short-term application comes in? And they taking into consideration the conditions of this residential neighborhood across the city?
And essentially, there have to be three complaints within a year basis, but that those complaints have been through a full appealable process. And so it's a pretty difficult finish line to cross because of the way that the state law was written in regards to revocation of permits.
So back to the attorney, because in...
Yeah, piggybacking.
In my non-legal opinion, it seems to me that if the short-term rental permit can't be applied for until a CO is issued, that he doesn't have a vested right yet in the short-term rental permit.
That's our conclusion. We agree. I agree.
So that's all my questions. Help has it to Commissioner Henley, but at this point in time, I would tend to support Counsel Lady Toom's request.
Commissioner Henley?
Commissioner Haynes just kind of nominated me to go next. He might have wanted to, the chair might have wanted to bounce around a little bit first. Well, I do have, I mean, I think some of my questions are, or some of my thoughts and questions are similarly aligned. First, I want to recognize, I understand the difficulty and the challenge and the discomfort with all the residents came and spoke in opposition of this. And maybe there's some clarification here for me, too, because it's CS, and we talked to, one of the applicants came up and mentioned having the utilities that run through the site, of course, acting as a deterrent. But with the current zoning, is a hotel use permitted on CS as it is? I mean, we're talking about a property that does have, you know, a policy and rights already associated with it, even though it's abutting a street and infrastructure that likely does not, arguably does not support the neighborhood as it is, but does not support that use adjacent to it.
Certainly. My computer has decided to restart itself, so it's restarting. But the zoning right now is CL, Commercial Limited. There was some discussion about the use as residential, and so CL does permit residential uses under certain conditions. And so this lot or property does meet those conditions under which residential, multifamily residential can be built. I'm trying to get the zoning code open, so I can tell you if hotels are permitted.
That's one of my questions. I think the rest of...
I will get back to you.
Yes.
Or I will use Todd's computer.
My comments here, I think, you know, understanding that the developers seem to be pursuing things that are within the rights that they have, I understand the challenge here. I think obviously there's some opportunity to look at the site, configure the site, have a very successful development. I don't know if that strategy and approach has been taken yet. I mean, that's something that I would always encourage. I think, for me, you know, it's always a challenge when properties have lain dormant for so long, and thinking about, of course, what rights and authorities we have as a body, because there's going to be sites like this that just continue to come before us as, you know, opportune for development. I'd like to listen to my fellow commissioners. I think there's a couple of other questions that may come up from that, but I definitely would like to understand what could be done if this never came before us and, you know, bulldozers or whatever just showed up there by right. I think it's just important to know where we are versus where we're trying to go.
So I have confirmed, thank you to Laslow for bringing me a printed-out land use table. And hotel is a permitted use under CL, under the existing zoning. It is a permitted use, and that would be limited to the FAR and ISR that is applicable to CL.
Thank you.
Counselman?
Thank you, Chair. During my numerous discussions that I've had with constituents and even with this board about short terminals over the years, one thing is that has emerged that maybe even further makes this a little bit more interesting is that having a number of homes or town homes be operated as a quote-unquote "hotel" has some similarities to that, but also some key differences. And so a lot of times, an actual hotel will have an entrance. It will likely have a one point of contact for who's managing the hotel for garbage disposal. It may have staff that are on-site. And so from a neighborhood quality of life standpoint, sometimes hotel might be okay in a way that having a bunch of homes or townhomes that are turned into short terminals is not. And so that's kind of one of the things that I would kind of offer, is that sometimes if you have a bunch of condos or houses that are all separately owned, separately managed, you have people checking in and out on them all at random times, it can be very difficult to know, who do you call about it? Because neighbors often, so often, are at the mercy of having a responsive STR management company, whereas a lot of times with a hotel, you know who the general manager is, right? So that's one of the things that I would offer, is that, I'm assuming, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but if someone, to the question of, is this use permitted? I believe that a hotel use is permitted even in an NS zone, and staff could correct me if I'm wrong about that. So if someone were wanting to open a hotel, they could still do that within the NS. But I do support Counselor Tooms in this, in some of these areas where, I mean, number one, we just need, I mean, I'm not categorically against short-term rentals. In some cases, I've, you know, we've had some that have been built in some locations where it really is appropriate. Let's say like on Main Street, we've got some that are there, they're right next door to businesses, they actually help provide foot traffic that supports those businesses in some cases. So sometimes they're okay. But as this goes further and further into a residential neighborhood, to the extent that we have folks that are wanting to build what seem to be housing units, we really need those to be housing units. And I think for the neighbors, the quality of life concerns, they're definitely still going to have traffic, but some of the quality of life concerns and other concerns that they have are generally going to be better if they have a neighbor that lives in the house across the street that they can talk to than if they have one entity that owns a bunch of separate short-term rental units or especially a bunch of separately owned ones. So I believe that this is supportive of both the commercial use is retained, that someone could still build a hotel there if they wanted to do that, but B, this provides some degree of comfort to the neighbors across the street, and furthermore, would add housing inventory in an area where we know that it's needed. So I support Counselor Tooms in this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. Giving the clarification from our legal counsel, the short-term rental usage is not vested rights, and for that reason, I think NS designation will meet existing community character policy and without infringing the property rights. So I do support staff recommendation and counsel lady's effort.
Commissioner Black, Chair.
Well, this is certainly an interesting case. That was fascinating that a hotel can be allowed in an NS zone, but you made great points about the differences between a hotel and a short-term rental. Although I am a lawyer, I would have no idea the proper answer to this case, and so I'm glad that our counsel has helped us kind of figure out, I guess, the solution for today, although I'm sure the opponent has very different ideas about what is vested and what is not vested. But us as a planning body, a policy, land policy, planning body, I think our job is to figure out what is the proper land policy for this area. I think what the neighbor said all made sense. Obviously, we can see in the picture on the screen where their houses are. Surely, a hotel could be built there according to current zoning, but I think the councilman said it very eloquently about all the differences between a hotel and a short-term rental. So is a short-term rental of, you know, however many units, the best, from a policymaking perspective, the best use for that land, and I think it's not. So I would be supportive also of the council lady's bill in removing the short-term rental from the zoning.
Vice Chair?
I am most definitely deferring to the legal advice and also the information that Lisa shared on the STR permitting process and revocation of permits. It's pretty tricky, but I do agree from a policy perspective, it makes sense. You know, an entire development of STR is adjacent to a small neighborhood. I understand that that, from a policy perspective, is not necessarily the best option. So I think I will be in support of staff's recommendation on this one.
Commissioner Gibbs? Before I make a motion, is there, are there any other legal comments or anything that needs to be made at all beforehand? Or, no?
No.
Okay. Well, I make a motion to accept staff recommendation for approv... That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second? Any other discussion? Commissioner?
So I usually, I try to not be long-winded when I speak. I do have a couple of, and maybe there just end up being comments and not necessarily questions, but, you know, I haven't been here for too long. But typically, when we have a council member that brings some type of zoning augmentation with the owner that does not support it, there's usually, there's usually some conversation about how that's treated. I think that's one, I think, too, we did have the owner of the property come up, and it seems like there may be confusion on both sides, both the opponents as well as those in support of exactly what this case was going to be and what it would be ruling on. And I also think my personal preference, and sometimes I get my hands slapped for this one, is that, you know, these are opportunities to utilize the SP to really vet what people will see in their neighborhood. I think right now, we're looking at a couple of boxes on the screen, and no one likes what they don't, they can't envision and see. So I do think, just before we would close the case, that we encourage the council member, current property owner, to talk to the neighbors, possibly find a resolution versus making a motion. You know, I think sometimes when we come here and things are resolved, they end up on consent. But those are just my comments. I just wanted to make those. I don't necessarily have any questions.
Any other questions? So we have a proper motion and a proper second to approve staff's recommendation. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Those no? Chair votes no. Seven to one. Yeah? No, you can't say yes or no?
No vote.
He's a no vote. So there's six ayes, two noes. Let's do a, let's just make sure for the video, let's, all the ayes, raise your hand. All the noes, raise your hand. All right, six ayes, two noes. We'll make sure we're clear. And it passes. So, I hate to do this, counsel lady, but I really have to use the restroom. Oh, boy. So, and it's been two and a half, well, two hours and 15 minutes of a meeting, and so we're going to, without objection, we'll take a quick 10-minute break, and then we'll come right back. Back up. All right, everybody. I apologize for the break, but we've been here quite a long time. So we approved item 26. Now we're back on to item 21 for the presentation.
Evening. My name's Eric McTravers, presenting item 21 on the agenda. Before I begin, I'd like to call your attention to the memo added to your agenda that corrects language in note two of the conditions. So this is a request to rezon from one and two family residential R6 and R40 and specific plan to specific plan zoning on 6.22 acres of properties located at Watts Lane and Watts Terrace, approximately 1,000 feet east of Charlotte Pike to permit 71 multifamily residential units.
Get a little bit closer, see if we can...
Yep. Is that better? Okay. It has a staff recommendation to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. So the 6.22 acre site, again, located about 1,000 feet east of Charlotte Pike, across from the intersection of Watts Lane and Neighborly Avenue. The site is partially developed and occupied by a mix of single-family houses and vacant land, and has frontage on Watts Terrace. The properties to the north across Watts Terrace are single-family houses on R6 and apartment complex on CS. Properties flank on either side of the proposed development are attached townhomes and vacant land, zoned RM15A. Properties to the east and south are church and single-family houses on R40, and the property to the west is a residential pud apartment complex. A portion of the site is covered by conservation policy due to the slopes, but the majority of the site is suburban neighborhood evolving. The proposed SP would permit a maximum of 71 multifamily units with an overall density of 11.4 units per acre. Detached units front Watts Lane, with the rest of the site containing a mixture of attached and detached townhouses. Vehicular access to the site is provided by two private drives flanking either side of the existing development. Townhouses are oriented to either sidewalks or formal green spaces. Individual garages are oriented to the gridded interior street network, and stormwater facilities are incorporated into green spaces. And lastly, a public access easement is provided on the eastern private street to allow the adjacent properties to the east to connect if they should choose to do so in the future. So staff finds the proposed preliminary SP to be in keeping with the policy intent of suburban neighborhood evolving and conservation policies. Suburban neighborhood evolving areas are described as moderate density with moderate connectivity, environmentally sensitive building and site development techniques. The proposed development features townhouses with an internal street network and sidewalk network that facilitates mobility. As previously stated, small parts of the site in the northeast and south have conservation policy due to natural slopes up to 20% grade. The slope portion in the northeast area is designated formal green space, and the slope portion in the south is generally undisturbed as part of a type E landscape buffer incorporating some existing vegetation. Therefore, the staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
Thank you. So commissioners will open this item for public hearing, and is the applicant in the room? There's the applicant. Ten minutes, you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Michael Garrigan. I'm an engineer with Dell and Associates, 516 Heather Place. We started working on this about a year and a half ago. Pretty unique situation where three separate ownership groups came to me at three different times without knowing each other, wanting to rezon. And I said, why would we do three projects? Let's do one. So that's been a fun challenge. But about a year ago is when we started our community outreach, knocking on doors, holding meetings. At that time, we were at about 15 units an acre, because that's what two reasons... adjacent properties to the east to connect if they should choose to do so in the future. So staff finds the proposed preliminary SP to be in keeping with the policy intent of suburban neighborhood evolving and conservation policies. Suburban neighborhood evolving areas are described as moderate density with moderate connectivity, environmentally sensitive building and site development techniques. The proposed development features townhouses with an internal street network and sidewalk network that facilitates mobility. As previously stated, small parts of the site in the northeast and south have conservation policy due to natural slopes up to 20% grade. The slope portion in the northeast area is designated formal green space, and the slope portion in the south is generally undisturbed as part of a type E landscape buffer incorporating some existing vegetation. Therefore, the staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
Thank you. So commissioners will open this item for public hearing, and is the applicant in the room? There's the applicant. Ten minutes, you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Michael Garrigan. I'm an engineer with Dell and Associates, 516 Heather Place. We started working on this about a year and a half ago. Pretty unique situation where three separate ownership groups came to me at three different times without knowing each other, wanting to rezone. And I said, why would we do three projects? Let's do one. So that's, that's been a fun challenge. But about a year ago is when we started our, our community outreach, knocking on doors, holding meetings. At that time, we, we were at about 15 units an acre because that's, that's what two rezones, the SP immediately to the west from 2019 and an RM15A piece across the street last year. And, and throughout, meeting with the community, working with, with, with the staff, we've, we've whittled that down over time from, I think we started around 94 units, now we're at 71, which is a little over 11 units an acre. So with apartments immediately to the west, 15 units an acre immediately to the northwest, and then 15 units an acre across the street, we felt like that, that was a great place to land. The reduction in density really opened up the green spaces. We've got, of the six acres, close to one acre is active, the three active parklets, I don't even know if the middle one would be that. I'd call that a park, that's a, that's a pretty large courtyard. The, the final item that we've really had a lot of confusion with over the past several months is Watts Terrace. It is, it's been the bane of all of our existence, including the staff. It is a private road, has a street sign, has parcels addressed off of it, but it has no plaque, and the deeds are very old and very confusing. And there was a lot of question as to why is it there, who has access to it, who has rights to it? We know that we do, and we know that the church does. The question was 807 Watts, which is the SP just to the west of the main entrance there. So a couple of weeks ago, working with staff, Metro Legal, as well as, as our legal counsel, we came to the decision that we could just simply call it a public access easement. That way, if you had access to it before, you still have it. If you didn't, you have it. We thought that was best win-win for everybody. That's caused some confusion or some concerns. If you all recall, several years ago, the property to the east was, I don't know the name of the subdivision, but it's Knob Hill. It has the WSNV tower on it, and it was very, very controversial. And the confusion now is that public access easement language is kind of a, the thought is, well, this is just opening the door for Knob Hill Part Two, bringing a road in off of this new public access easement. That is 100% not our intent. I want that to be on the record. My clients had nothing to do with Knob Hill. They barely know about that process and that project. There is absolutely no intent for this development group to connect to the church property other than giving them the right they already have to connect to the road that they already have rights to. So on paper, absolutely nothing's changing. We're simply improving Watts Terrace. So, you know, if the church in the Knob Hill property wants to come back through and, and try another shot at it, they're gonna have to go through this process. And, and just because an easement that's already in existence is gonna be improved, I don't think it's gonna change anybody's mind on whether it should be extended. So with that, we do ask for your approval. We have one thing I failed to mention, one item we worked real close with the community on was the traffic study. When we were at 90 units, it was triggered. When we dropped it down, it's no longer triggered, but we're still honoring it. Its, its main requirement is to widen Watts Lane from our site to Charlotte, which, if you've ever been through there, it's, it's very much one of these. There's some very narrow areas that, that need to be widened, brought, bring it up to public standard. We've agreed to do that. So as far as the development goes, to my knowledge, absolutely everybody we've been working with over the past year and a half is, is on board with this. It's just that confusion of the what-if with the Knob Hill property, which, again, I would say, nothing is changing. It's an easement that's there today, we're simply improving it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposite? Oh, anyone with support? Come on up. I'm sorry. I was being a little quick. Quick on the draw. Welcome, state your name, two minutes, and your address. Thank you for the record.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Doug Simpson. I live at 6018 Hill Circle. First of all, I wanted to thank the planning commission, your staff, and the council members for all the work they do, helping to guide the growth of Nashville is experiencing right now. I know that's a challenge. I've lived and have been investing in this area for over 17 years. My family and I currently own 16 parcels on Watts Terrace, Neighborly Avenue, Marcia, and Hill Circle. And our family business, Stonehouse Construction, is building beautiful, high-quality homes on some of these parcels. We're heavily invested in this area and would never support a rezoning that would hurt our current or future builds, along with our, our neighbors who we've been selling homes to. So we're pretty invested and don't want to damage that reputation. I attend as many community meetings as possible to help guide the inevitable growth we're facing, and I'm not a land planning expert, but I do have, I have studied the area and its, its current density, and I believe this plan and development fits really well with what we're doing and the similar density around it. I think it'll help by creating much-needed, moderate-priced housing and also bring more families into the area that'll help support the businesses around us. For all those reasons, my family and I support the proposed SP, and thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Good evening.
My name is Derek Schindel, and I live at 400 River Rouge Court, and I just wanted to voice my approval for this project. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Derek, go next.
You want to go next, council lady?
I do.
Yeah, and then you can go at the end, too.
I'll go first.
Okay, come on up.
I'm going to double dip.
Double dip.
Thank goodness you went to the bathroom, because we all got to sit and talk for a minute. So the opposition got to talk as well, and that hadn't happened. So this, that was really good talking on your part. Thank you again for all you all do. I appreciate you giving your time, and I know that's a big chunk of time, and I appreciate it. We've been working on this, like Mr. Garrigan said, for two and a half years, and we've gotten a lot of density. It started as a pretty dense project, and now it's kind of pared down to something that I think is pretty manageable. We have, let me think of all the things, sorry about that, I kind of tuned out for a second. I've asked them several times to defer this, and they have obliged. The planning commission, planning also asked them to defer. Everything we've asked them to do, they've pretty much done. We are doing a traffic study right now to talk about widening Watts Terrace, which will do a lot for this area because there are a lot of safety concerns with a road that, as small as this is for ingress egress. We not only decreased the density, we added green space, we added parking. This is also compliant with the Community Character Manual and Nashville Next. There was no opposition to this. This was tentatively on consent tonight, but when I got the call from the folks that he mentioned that live on Knob Hill on the other side of this, Knob Road, they have, as Commissioner Johnson and I have fought the good fight for the last seven years, come several times before, different entities trying to put houses behind houses on Knob Road. And it's been so, such a contentious fight for the last seven years, and luckily, we've prevailed every time. So when they read this, even though the, the opposition that's here is opposed to, I mean, not opposed to the plan at all, but when they read the possibility that the church could gain access through Watts Terrace, it triggered them, understandably, because this has been a long, ongoing tumultuous fight that we've had, and they, they don't, they, 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 as I, do not want that to ever happen. However, they are in support of this plan, I'm in support of this plan. I think after two and a half years, we've ironed out all the kinks, and I think it's probably a pretty healthy plan with all the green space we've incorporated. So with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you, council lady. We'll save you at the end as well. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Come on up. Hello?
Thank you so much for this evening. Wow, this is loud. My name is Carla Simpson, and I own two properties on Watts Terrace, one of which I live in with one of my brothers, and share ownership in several others in the area. Doug Simpson is my brother, and we have the business of Stonehouse Construction in the area. The proposed Watts Terrace development has the opportunity to enhance the development in this area of West Nashville. It offers moderately priced housing in an area that includes significant walkable green space and increased parking, which is desperately needed. The development, it does, as you heard, include widening the road onto Watts Terrace, and it's gonna be a benefit to all in the area, the established homes as well as the new development. While working with community members and owners on the overall plan, as you heard, the density was reduced and the parking was added and improved, and the proposed density feels really good. The, the area with the walkability and opportunity to, to have a really good quality of life is really a great plan. My family and I support the proposed SP. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Welcome.
Howdy. I'm Mike Williams, 6457 Fleetwood Drive. My property, a butts property that's mentioned in this application, and that's why I've come here tonight. You know already the focus of what I'm gonna say is the possible connectivity between Watts Terrace and the church's land. Several of you here on this commission already have been through the wars on this with me and neighbors for Knob Hill on at least three applications on Knob Hill. I just want to say that if you're gonna connect on the north side of the church's land, do it at Watts Lane Terminus. There's a piece of land the church owns, and they go around that way. Do not do it on Watts Terrace. If you'll imagine if Knob Hill ever gets developed, and there's a big subdivision up there, cut through to, from Charlotte, Watts Terrace, cut through to Knob Road, it'll be a, a popular destination day and night for traffic. And here you got this little quiet neighborhood it's all gonna go through. I'm okay about the SP, except for that one thing. I ask you to add a condition. I don't know how you'd word it, might be a restrictive covenant, I don't know. Just to say that there will be no connectivity between Watts Terrace and the church's land. Period. Now or ever. Just take it off the table. I think that's the only reason they put that sentence in here about the eastern private drive is within a public access easement to allow for future connect, connection to the adjacent church property, was to make it so if you approve this SP, you codify the permission to make that connectivity later, and I don't think it should be there. There's a better option? It's just not a good way to treat that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? One more, I think.
Hello, everyone. I'm Rob Chaplicki. I live at 6453 Fleetwood Drive. We just found out about this line in the, on page 85 under plan regarding the eastern private drive is within a public access easement to allow for future connection to the adjacent church property. Obviously, I'm part of neighbors for Knob Hill. That wrote, you know, brought us to a great concern about what would, could possibly happen. You know, we've been through this five or six times already. I had a conversation just now with Mr. Garrigan and councilperson Roberts. I feel, I mean, I'm, I'm completely supportive of this. We have friends who will benefit from this. Our biggest concern is we don't want to go back and battle with the church. So I don't know what we can do, or if it isn't even part of what we're talking about now. That, that was our only concern about this. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time, and thank you for explaining this to me.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Seeing none, two-minute rebuttal, and then the council lady.
Yes, again, it's Michael Garrigan with Dell and Associates. It's, it's a pickle. I mean, we, we, we don't want traffic flowing through this all day and night. I just don't know how, and we're, and let me say, we're, we're very open to, to, if there's any way we can come up with some language or what have you through the council process, it 100% will get added to the bill. I mean, I think it's evident by, you know, the, the buffer we had against Watts Terrace between us and the church that's been in the plan since we filed in June of last year that it was never our intent to get into the church property. The problem is there's that windy road, you can see it on the aerial there, that gets to, to the existing TV tower, radio tower, communications, I don't know what it's called. We can't just simply say you don't have access through here. The church doesn't have access, because they do today. They have the legal right to it today, and they're gonna have to have it tomorrow until they decide they don't want it. If there was a way, if, if anybody knows of a way, we're, we're all game for it. But, you know, it's, it's not our intent, and once again, like I said before, this is not changing anything. It's that the access for them is there today. It's just, we're, we're building part of it, not to them, but on our property, they'd have the right to come build it today. So that's all I have. Just wanted to thank planning staff, Abby and Eric. We've had a lot of conversations over this, all the community members that we've met with, small groups, large groups, and, and especially Council Lady Roberts for all her hard work and continued discussions with us, as we seem to have called with something new just about every month over the past couple of years. But thank you guys so much. We ask for your support.
Council lady?
Thank you. I'm not really sure what I can add to that, other than I'm not, I don't know what the solution is. I don't think anybody wants ingress egress for the church. I just don't know how to put that in writing, because the, it exists currently. Like, we're not, I don't think this plan changes what's already there. I think they could have already done this if they had wanted to. It's a gravel road. I, I'm with, I, I do not want them to have ingress egress, but I don't know how to word this. I'm open to solution, any solution, and I think we all are on a way to put this in here, in, and make sure it's in there before we go to council, actually. So I'm not adding a whole lot of value to that. So thank you for letting me-
Thank you, council lady. We'll for sure ask about it and talk about it. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. I think we're at, Commissioner Black's here is first.
Yeah, well, I was actually interested to hear what-
Sorry. I was interested to hear Commissioner Johnson. I mean, you've obviously had some experience with the, the church and the, I guess, the connectivity arguments. Do you have anything? I mean, I'd just be interested to hear what you have to say before I offer thoughts.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. So could you tell me about the existing easement of that gravel road of the church property house?
Sure. So there's currently already an access drive through the church property, sort of the curving road that goes up to and connects to Watts Lane. Actually, a, a good part of the drive is on the church's property. It's shifting with this plan to the east and being improved. And so staff, like Mr. Garrigan indicated, we have gone round and round with the developer to make sure that we understood what the existing access was, who had rights to it. The church has rights to use that existing drive that goes through their property through Watts Terrace up to Watts Lane. And so when it was shifting off of their property, we wanted to make sure that we were maintaining the existing rights that the church has to utilize that drive up to Watts Lane. So that's a currently existing condition, and we try, anytime we're reviewing projects or anytime we're reviewing SPs where we have sort of access easements or existing accesses like that, we want to make sure that we're not doing something that is taking away someone's right of access that they have had. And so this is maintaining that existing right of access.
I appreciate the clarification. So it's just preserving existing rights, but it's not requesting this project to construct the private street as a standard of anticipating future development or nothing like that. We just, they have to follow existing private street guideline, but preserve the easement for the future.
They have, they have to preserve the easement for the access which currently exists. Right, there's access already, and we're- Right, there's access already and we're preserving that access in a slightly shifted drive, but it's still the same route. And so we're preserving that access.
So with that, it's kind of legal term, but we really have to preserve the legal rights. I thought the condition was somewhat restricted because the new one, it says you cannot, shall be recorded prior to assurance of any building permits. But if it's existing rights, that will protect, kind of makes sense. So I think, you know, when the new development comes, they have to be bet it its own benefit, not conjunction with other project or other development. So just looking at this project, I think density is in line with T3 neighborhood evolving. And it would be great to have additional street improvement of the Watts Lane and as well as Watts Terrace. So this within development, I think it's a really reasonable with understanding because if and when adjacent development is proposed, it will be better with that connectivity. Just because easement is here, we are not proactively or preemptively endorsing the connectivity. With that understanding, I think this project itself is good because we cannot eliminate their owners' rights. So I think for that reason, language has to be in there for the legal protection. So for that reason, I would support this project and self-recommendation.
Councilman? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Blackshear, back to you, sorry.
That's fine. I mean, I'm willing to wait after the councilman. I just, I wanted to hear, since Commissioner, former councilman, Council Lady Johnson has had experience with this, I just wanted to hear her thoughts on it. I mean, it is quite a thorny issue. There are obviously rights out there that are in existence. Everyone seems to be in favor of the project, but for this connectivity issue, it sounds like the council lady really would like some language to be in there this time around. But I don't know, and our council can weigh in on whether there's anything that's permissible that could be added to the legislation.
What I'm hearing from staff right now is that it's already a pre-existing legal right. So I'm not exactly sure how we could, how we could do anything to carve that out.
Well, I thought you were going to give us something more creative than that. Having exhausted all of my resources, I mean, I am in favor of the plan. I mean, it is unfortunate that this piece is kind of baked in there, but I would not want to not approve the plan because of that issue. So I would be in support.
I like how short and sweet our council is. It's very to the point. That's what I like. Councilman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair, and I appreciate the explanation from Mr. Garrigan and from Councilmember Roberts, as well as our own legal counsel. This is a busy area. Councilmember Roberts has had a few items on our agendas lately. So I've been getting to know some of these little tiny streets back in there lately, checking out some of those sites. And there is a lot of topography and the streets are pretty narrow in a lot of places. So I think that, you know, a lot of times we hear from community members who are housing advocates that we need to add housing. But sometimes those street configurations make that really challenging. And I think this is a really creative way of doing that, that also adds some green space. So it should be a very pleasant place to walk around, even just within the site, but also to add a little bit. It's close enough to Charlotte that if you get there, there's some things you can get to as well. So I think this is a creative plan and I support the staff's recommendations. Thanks.
Commissioner Henley?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have much to add. I mean, I like the plan. I'm a fan of seeing the amount of green space that's being brought into, you know, community that'll have new housing. And it seems like we have one kind of unique challenge and we're all kind of, you know, putting our hands on our head, trying to figure out, scratching how to do it. But I mean, I don't have anything to object to and I will support staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Clifton?
I'm a, I just can't think of anything else to add. I know that it's an awkward thing. I mean, I go to a church in the Melbourne neighborhood and it's, it's got roads that provide access. And as response to neighbors' interest, we put in a, I think it's legal, we put in a bar that we only take down when it's terrible weather and people need a back way to get to our church. That's what we do. But, and I don't know if the church has plans to do something more to use that or what, but that's really not our call, I'm afraid, at this point. I, like everyone, was hoping the lawyer could come up with something. I hear they know everything and, you know. I'm sorry, I asked, said that as a lawyer, just a joke.
A lot of lawyers here.
I don't know what we could do to do what these folks very legitimately want to have done. I just don't know. So I will be voting for the motion.
Commissioner Hanks?
So let's roll this forward 10 years and none of us are on this board and we've got a different council and someone comes in to try to develop the Knob Hill property. What happens in that scenario when they argue they've got this public access easement and no one's here to remember institutionally that we said they couldn't do that? How do we handle that, council?
Well, you've set forth what they, you have the access easement and the SP.
For this property, but I'm talking about when someone comes in to develop the adjacent Knob Hill Tower. Isn't that the, isn't that the challenge?
Well, so, but the access is already there today. And so I would presume, you know, 10 years down the road, we're all still here, that, that, that they would say that if this didn't happen, we already have access and we would, as a commission, continue to do an assessment based on that plan. The plan that the church plan was denied several times, it's been through several reviews. And whether this was an improved access, Lisa, can you remind me? Wasn't the basis of the final decision. And so I, it's not that it's moved, it's just, this has been an existing factor when the church property development has been, you know, disapproved various times and been to court and other things.
Right. And what I would add too is, I mean, of course, any, if there was a proposal to do something on the church property, it would either be a rezoning or a subdivision. There are standards for access for subdivisions that we would have to review with the subdivision regulations for any proposal that comes through. And so we are maintaining the access that is legally there that the church has right now. You all would, or any version of you all, I don't know what we're forecasting, would have to look at any proposals for the property if they came forward. But, I mean, we're maintaining what they have now.
Great. Thank you. I think this is a good plan. I'm going to support staff's recommendation. I do worry about 10 or 15 years from now, what would happen, but that's not under our purview under this situation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tibbs?
So I don't have anything else that I can add to all this. I think the neighbor understands, we kind of understand that, you know, we all feel your pain in a sense of that, but understand just our restrictions. And it sounds like council, you know, she understands it as well. So if there's ever something, it sounds like she will keep an eye out too. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any, oh, more discussion, Lisa, one more?
Just to know, if we could get the motion to say it approved with conditions, including the updated condition noted in the minutes, I mean, noted in the memo?
Make a motion to approve also, including the memo, you said?
Approved with conditions, including the updated condition noted in the memo.
Okay. Yes, that, as noted by Lisa.
As noted, yeah.
It's a proper motion. And second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post no? Ayes have it. All right. Thank you, Council lady, for waiting. We appreciate you very much, your patience. All right. So commissioners, we are on item number 22. And so we have just a lot of unique cases tonight. So this particular item, we have finished the public hearing. We are still on discussion. It was deferred, but there has been an update to the plan. And so we need to, I would like for this team to go over those updates and how it's been down zoned, I believe, or, yeah, okay.
Ready?
Go ahead.
Okay, sounds good. Hi, everyone. My name is Amelia Lewis and I will be presenting item 22 tonight. Sorry, I should say, as a reminder, this item was heard at the January 12th Planning Commission meeting and was deferred for the applicants to review and submit a revised plan based on comments from members of the public and members of the commission. The request is to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. I would also like to note that you should have a memo on your, with your agenda tonight that clarifies when we published the staff report, somehow condition number four was left blank. But we have since found it and put it in a memo for you guys. And so that condition has been included in a memo as well as the parks' conditions regarding the greenway as that, as they were not available at the time of report publication. So just a quick review of the site shown on the screen. Current zoning is AR2A, CS and R15. The requested zoning is SP. So this is kind of a brief list of the comments and concerns from January 12th, the discussion on January 12th. And so I'm going to go through and address all of these and look at the new site plan for you guys. And we can talk about that as well as I run through these. So on the, I'm going to avoid sides, but so we have the January site plan on the left side of the screen and the revised site plan, which would be today's plan, shown on the right side of the screen. You can see towards the southern portion of the site. A lot of the proposed development or previously proposed development has since been removed and there are some other changes in there as well. I would like to orient you guys, so we are facing north. The eastern kind of property line is along Music Valley Drive. The southern property line is on McGavick Pike and portions of the site along the western property line have frontage along McGavick, or I'm sorry, Pennington Bend. And so one big area of discussion was regarding the floodplain boundary. And so both of those, the red line is indicating the flood, approximate floodplain boundary on the site. So you can kind of see how those two different areas are contrasted between the site plan that was shown in January and the revised site plan today. So again, I'm going to go through those kind of main bullet points. And the first one is looking at the density of the proposed development. And I think there were some questions about if the proposed overall density could be reduced. And so this is kind of touched on in two main features. There was a reduction in the RVs from 450 to 425. And this, I guess, also ties in really with number two, the proposed development in the floodplain area. So between the two plans, we saw a removal of the, a large area within the floodplain area removed out and is no longer proposed to be used for RVs. It did result in a slight reduction in the number of RV units. And the disturbance of the overall floodplain area went from about 60% to a maximum of 20%. The other thing is there was, on the previous plan, along the southern portion of the site, along McGavick Pike, a restaurant area and some other proposed uses down there. That restaurant area has been relocated to be up along Music Valley Drive, kind of in that built area with multifamily and the hotel uses. So third, there was a lot of questions about, there was a proposed outdoor amphitheater and concerns about how sound would carry over the river. The outdoor amphitheater has since been removed. An indoor kind of event center space remains, but that outdoor amphitheater was removed. Item number four, evacuation. A, an example from another North Gate community provided a specific evacuation plan, which was uploaded to the website as an example of what they would propose and use on other resorts. I believe there is a condition in our staff report that that evacuation report specific to this site be required with the final. So looking at the next discussion about buffering the proposed development with the surrounding adjacent uses. So with the updated plan, the layout of the multifamily buildings at the northeast corner has been modified slightly and a landscape buffer has been put in place behind those multifamily structures. Additionally, there is a 30-foot wide landscape buffer shown along the northern property line adjacent to that other RV site that's immediately to the north. The sixth item for review is archaeology. Information provided by the Metro Historic Department did not provide any known registered archaeological sites on the subject site. They did indicate that the areas immediately along the Cumberland River have contained a large number of prehistoric sites. There is a medium to high possibility of a prehistoric site on the parcels, consistent with how we've kind of addressed the potential for archaeological resources on the site. If any archaeological discoveries are made on the site during grading and construction, the applicant would need to meet all state and federal regulations regarding the discovery. And this is a condition of approval within the SP. Item number seven, I believe, was in regards to if there is a flooding event, what are the potential impacts on the sewage system for the RVs? This one, a lot of research went into. Thank you to Metro Stormwater for helping me go through this and I'm going to try to explain it to the best of my abilities. So according to the information provided by Metro Stormwater, all RVs placed on sites must be fully licensed and ready for highway use. They're attached to the site by only quick disconnect type utilities and security devices. And the recreational vehicle must meet all the requirements or the connections must be at the elevation above floodplain level. So specifically sewers in flood-prone areas are designed to achieve total containment of sanitary waste and the exclusion of infiltration and illicit connections. This includes installing pipe with watertight joints, watertight connections to manholes and watertight connections to service laterals or service lateral stubs and using trench design that minimizes the potential for the migration of water along the trench. And lastly, I think the question about the existing And lastly, I think the question about the existing policy on the site. So our policies on the site are primarily conservation, and then the northeastern portion of the site is within the suburban community center policy. And so one of the questions that was posed to us at the last meeting was how did this community center policy come into place? And so according to our policy team, the portion of the site that's along Music Valley Drive, which is the site, the site's frontage up along that northeastern portion of the site, in 2004, this policy was commercial arterial, which allowed a wide range of commercial uses. With the application of the community character policies in 2013, the policy became suburban community center. I did ask if there, at that time, was any discussion about a concern for having non-residential uses at that, in this area, or the level of density that was proposed. The kind of feedback that we got was that, given the existing uses that are surrounding in this area, it wasn't as much of a concern during that time. And here is that map and that suburban community center policy that you can see. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, and that should be kind of a brief overview of how the plan has been modified since January.
Thank you very much. Now, just a status check. Thank you for the presentation. We are still in procedurally discussion, is where we are procedurally. The public hearing has already taken place, and so we do have the councilman in the room, Councilman Syracuse. And I think in the update doing this, we asked some questions about, you know, did the councilman support the plan or not? So I would like to call the councilman up, and because that came up a couple of times during, during our discussion last time. Thank you, Councilman, for coming. Welcome.
I'm not going to touch it. Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. Good to see everybody. Yes, is the short answer. Do I, do I support this? Sure. It's been quite a journey with, with this, for sure. As staff talked about, it's interesting that you have conservation policy mixed, butted up right against T3. All right. So I think the evolution of this plan really has shown with a lot of input from the community, from the whole development team, how to fit this in and be sensitive to the conservation policy that's there. And in fact, you know, the creek that's there has been channeled over time with the agricultural uses there, and the team is actually going to bring it back to its natural state. And so the, the part that's, that's not going to be developed will actually be a place where wildlife can, can be, which was, was a legit concern from, from some neighbors about the review that they had, and are we displacing wildlife and things like that? So, you know, I, I had a whole lot of engagement on this, lots of meetings, and I'm thankful to the development team that, that listened. They were there at every meeting and, and listened a lot to the, the community. You have a lot of letters of support from the surrounding neighbors and from the surrounding businesses especially. It's been very interesting over the past couple few years. I've been very thoughtful and intentional about development proposals in Pennington Bend. It's an interesting mix of rural character, suburban, and regional tourist destination. You know, I've, I've been very thoughtful about making sure that the development proposals that are coming before me, which there isn't a whole lot of room left in Pennington Bend to develop, and I wanted to make sure that everything aligned with policy. I even created policy, the update to the walk bike plan, that creates this multi-use path system, which is the pragmatic way to get pedestrian connectivity that meets rural character versus regional tourist destination, and it, and it meets the goals of both parks and NDOT. And so this development will take into consideration the, the use of the multipath system. It'll be a short jaunt on your bike then to get to the Opry Mills Greenway Connector, which is going to break ground this summer. And so it's very supportive of the whole Music Valley brand as well. It brings in very good quality tourists here and is, is a good use of the land. I can tell you that Ann Gleves, who, who is here, she was very picky about who she wanted to develop this, and it is done in such a way that it honors the family's legacy. It was done with a lot of input from, from Ms. Gleves. And so the, the community around there is, is, is proud to have this. Folks that live on Pennington Bend have written letters in, in support on this. So I appreciate all the neighbors from District 7 overlooking this on, on Bluff Road there. They had legit concerns, especially with the outdoor amphitheater, which has now been completely resolved, that it's indoor, it's much smaller. You know, there, there's a whole lot less of camp, there's, there's less campsites, there's a whole, a lot less in the conservation policy. And what else? Sensitivity to cultural resources and the archaeology as well. So I think we're there. This has been an evolution, and I'm, I'm proud of this, and it's, it's a good use of the land. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. So we're still on discussion. Commissioner Clifton, you want to start us off?
Thank you. It's a lot better, it seems to me. I think we, I think we had a unanimous vote last time to defer this, to hear more. I don't think anyone was prepared to support it last time. So I was hoping to be able to support this, and it clearly is much better. I'm a little bit concerned about conservation policy, which this is, the floodplain part of it is conservation policy. And as, I think, I think this is not propaganda. I think this is probably real, that, that the floodplain area and conservation policy will lose 80% of its existing tree canopy. Does that sound right to you?
So the, the previous plan, well, there's, there's not a tremendous amount of tree canopy on the site currently because it had been formerly actual agricultural use, and so there's not a tremendous amount of existing tree canopy. This is not a heavily trade site. The previous plan was disturbing around 60% of the floodplain area. As amended, it's disturbing around 20% of the floodplain area. And so it's significantly less disturbance than the previous plan, but this is not, and they are maintaining existing tree cover as well where possible, but this is not, and, and planting back a lot of trees too, but this is not a heavily tree-covered site.
So you don't, you don't think the information that I have is accurate about, about 80% being, going away with this in the actual, in the policy area, in the conservation policy area?
80% of the conservation policy area isn't being disturbed, and so I'm, I'm a little bit confused.
Well, I mean, 80% of the tree canopy itself is what I have been led to believe. I mean, we all have something in front of us about it.
So looking at the aerial photography of the portion of the site that would be the portion of the, the portion of the site that would be disturbed. So what Amelia's, I think we're talking about two different things. So the tree canopy is not synonymous with conservation policy, first of all. So there's a standard that says that 20% of the existing tree canopy on the entire site will be maintained. And so that's separate from sort of the conversation about conservation, because tree coverage and conservation are not synonymous. And so they're essentially proposing that they would maintain 20% of the existing tree canopy, and then also plant back a significant number of trees. The conservation policy is only applicable to the floodplain area. So tree canopy is not covered by conservation, so I think that might be why I was confused. There's trees on the property outside of the conservation policy. Trees and conservation aren't synonymous from a policy standpoint. Our conservation policies are reflective of floodplain, floodways, steep slopes, and problem soils, but not tree canopy.
Okay. So you think it's actually not?
There, yeah, there are two different things.
Not right to say that, that the tree canopy is going away?
There is going to be some removal of trees, yes. This plan would maintain 20% of the existing tree canopy. I'm trying to separate tree canopy from conservation policy area because they're not synonymous.
Okay. Well, one of my concerns was that. Another one is, obviously, most of this, I think, is great for the area. I'm, I'm just, I'm really not sure about the RV parking pads proposed within the floodplain. Is it, is that wrong to you? Are they not in the floodplain?
There are, yes, there are RV parking pads within the floodplain, and we did take a look countywide. That is not an unusual situation to have. When you're talking about sort of, a floodplain does not mean that it can't be built on, and you just have to meet the Stormwater regulations to build on the floodplain. For example, this property is currently zoned AR2A. If somebody wanted to come in and subdivide it out into two acre lots, those two acre lots could cover all of the floodplain area, and any homes in those areas would then just need to be built above the flood elevation. And so floodplain does not mean unbuildable. It just means that you have to maybe take extra precautions to build up out of a floodplain. But when we're talking about, from a rezoning perspective of what uses might be more appropriate in a floodplain area, something like an RV that is not a permanent structure that can be easily moved is, is maybe a more appropriate use. And because the plan was changed to only be disturbing 20% of the actual total floodplain on the area, then we felt like that was a pretty low-impact use, given that it's not a permanent structure.
I'm in favor of most of this plan. Not quite sure I'm in favor of the plan, though, yet completely. I'll just listen for a while and quit talking.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think, Councilman, did you have more information on the question about tree canopy?
Is it permissible? The engineer could come up and address the, the concern about trees. There's going to be above the metro requirement of, of trees on this site, when all said and done.
Yeah, we can ask the developer.
Is that all right?
I'll ask the developer, because that makes sense. I mean, we need to know, is there going to be more trees or not?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Trey Rudolph with Gresham Smith. I'm a landscape architect. We're at 222 Second Avenue. To your question about are we intending to remove 80% of the tree canopy, certainly not. It's in our best interest, certainly. All camping grounds are better with mature trees preserved around, and that is the intent of the development. Unfortunately, we tried to apply a 20% threshold as a way to go above and beyond what code requirement is. As of today, we wouldn't really have to preserve any of that tree canopy, but the intent is to work within the existing trees as much as possible. So if we have RV sites that are adjacent to tree canopy, we want to preserve those if we can. Unfortunately, the way the current metro ordinance is written, if I impact any portion of the drip line of that tree, it can't be counted as a preserved tree, whether it lives for another 30 years or not. So that's where we got into a little bit of a difficult place, where if I put a higher percentage on it, and then at the end of the day, even though the tree lives, it's not technically by definition preserved under metro's ordinance. So the 20% number was an effort on our behalf to go above and beyond and express that we do intend to keep those trees, but it's being perceived more like we're trying to take out 80%, and that's not, that is really not our intent.
Thank you. That's helpful. Stuart A.
Yeah, I'd like to hear, since we've opened it up, I'd like to hear from the speaker who represents the people who are on board on this.
So I knew this was going to happen. Commissioner, you, so if that is a request to open the public hearing back up, and we provided information, and when commissioners have questions, when we are in our discussion phase, we allow answers to those questions. You had a question about tree canopy, not, it's not, we're not in the debate portion or public open portion. So if you would like, we could, we would have to open the public hearing back up.
I don't want to reopen it forever, like about four or five minutes.
No, that's, no, 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 no. Mr. Kleinfeldter, we are not debating. This is discussion of the commissioners, which is what we traditionally do all the time. Now, this commission can open the public hearing back up. Is that the request? Because we're not going to have a back and forth because that's not part of the questions.
Here's, my request is, I would like to be able to vote for this. I can't like this, and that's not, I'm just one vote. But yes, I'd like to have a limited opening of it, just to specifically ask about that.
Well, Commissioner, we've never had a limited opening of a public hearing. If we open the public hearing, we have to open it completely. As you know, you've been on the commission for several decades.
So, that's not true, just 20 or 30 years.
That's too, several means too. No, no, so.
So I don't, I don't fully understand everything you said to be true exactly about that, because it seems like when we do go beyond what's before us, and there's a legitimate dispute about it, it doesn't seem like the end of the world to hear from both sides. That's all I'm saying.
Well, yes, Commissioner, but legally, we would have to open the public hearing, because I.
And then it'd be open for all purposes.
Yes, yes, and I think our counsel would agree. Let's, let's hear from the counselor, our lawyer.
Okay.
Would you like my brief remarks on this?
Yes, brief.
If you do open the public hearing, you have to open it for, for everyone. You can't just invite whom you choose to invite to the public hearing. It's public, so anyone who's out there can come and speak.
I understand, but what we did was open the public hearing for practical, for all practical purposes, for the proponent.
Well, respectfully, I disagree, because what we usually do traditionally, Stuart, when we ask questions about a specific thing, and we have asked questions to developers without opening the public hearing back up, right?
Okay. That's probably true.
Okay. So, but let me make sure, though. I mean, if, if the commissioners feel like we want to open the public hearing, then we want, I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm just saying that what we have practiced, I don't want to open up a can of worms for, when we, if we as commissioners have questions of a developer in the future, that's not opening the public hearing. And so a lot of times, the developers, not developers, mostly, mostly the lawyers will take it a step too far and say that, you know, we can't ask a question and we have to open the public hearing back up. And they, they'll, you know, you give them an inch, they'll take a mile.
Those lawyers are terrible.
They're terrible. So commissioners, I'll ask this, I mean, we could.
I understand which way it's going. I may be completely wrong in my thinking. I was just sharing my.
No, it's legitimate.
Fairness of it.
Yeah. No, I get it.
That's allowed.
Okay. Commissioner Henley? So we are not opening the public hearing back up, to be clear. Commissioner Henley?
You know, my, my, my knee-jerk response when I saw the, the revised or modified plan is that, you know, a lot of the things that we heard and were discussed, they addressed. I know there was a lot of conversation, particularly about the floodplain, that area, the amount of disturbance there, the location of, an activation of an area that was largely dormant towards the end of McGavick Pike. I think those are the things that I saw that, like, just immediately I noticed. And then with more clarification, I think one of the, one of the things that had the most opposition was the, the amphitheater. Again, as the council member mentioned, that, that seems to be, have been resolved. And I believe I understand the intent behind, you know, the tree canopy and, and the language there. So I, I personally like the plan. I think it's a, it's a plan that has a lot less disturbance in an area that, and in a community that would like for it to remain that way. And, and I'm, I'm pleased that, you know, we sent a group away, and they came back with significant changes in the right direction. And so for that, I mean, with that purpose and with my current understanding. I mean, I'm in favor of the plan as it's presented. Don't really have any other comments, so the commissioner speak.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilman?
Thank you, Chair. So, I, you know, we have conservation policy in T3, T4, T5, T6, right? So, we don't necessarily stop all development from happening in any of those areas, but it just needs to be done sensitively. This discussion has kind of prompted me to refer to a chapter of the Community Character Manual that I don't read a whole lot. But so, for, in conservation, the policy in the Community Character Manual, it states that for floodplains, land area including the floodway of a river stream or water course that is susceptible to being inundated by water is identified by the 100-year flood. Management of floodplain is addressed as a preventative measure in greenfield development situations and a remediation measure in areas where development has occurred. And this is where I'm going to maybe get to my question for staff a little bit. Continuing on, in greenfield areas, the majority of the natural floodplain area is left in its undisturbed natural state. Clearing of trees and brush from this area is avoided. Portions of the floodplain or waterway may be incorporated into private or public open space associated with parks, recreation, and civic uses. Next paragraph, low-intensity land uses are developed in those portions of floodplain that are permitted to be disturbed, keeping disturbance to a minimum. Where a site containing floodplain also contains land that is outside the floodplain, development should be such that the buildings are grouped on the portions of the site that is not floodplain, leaving the floodplain for the creation of public or private open space. And so, in order to maintain water quality, facilitate flood control, and ensure public safety, the development potential for the floodfront portion of the site is lower than it is for the developable portion of a site. As redevelopment occurs, lands within the floodplain and floodway that have been compromised by development should be reclaimed and protected in the manner addressed above. So, that gives, it's helpful to me, and I hope it is to other commissioners as well and to the public that's watching. I guess maybe a question that I might have for staff, because I think that this text generally, I think, helps me to understand where staff is coming from for a little bit. But with this site, since it largely had been agricultural, though not entirely, is this classified more as a greenfield development site? Or how would you all apply this policy to this land?
Yeah, this would be more of a greenfield site, where we have focused the majority of the development onto the non-floodplain sites and limited low-impact development in the areas of the floodplain that are proposed to be disturbed, the 20%.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I think that's helpful. I think the explanation too about having the RV use, which, again, we don't see every day at council or planning, but how that could be a less intense use than permanent structures is helpful. I am persuaded that a lot of the floodplain area, even the RV sites have been removed from a lot of that. And hearing some additional information about kind of naturalizing some of the other features, I feel that this does meet the conservation policy based on, at least the sections that I read from the manual just now. So, I'm, you know, can see where it maybe isn't 100% there for everyone, but I feel that it certainly has made great strides in coming into greater compliance for the conservation policy. We had a lot of discussion last time about the amphitheater, and I was sharing that when I was a young'un running around Opryland, like, there was music there all the time. And I'm sure that people listening, living nearby, up on the bluffs, were there when Opryland was there, they heard music a lot, right? So, as a council member, I now have the headache of dealing with noise complaints all the time. And so, I think about that differently than I did when I was 12 years old. But, since the amphitheater use, it has been changed to a, an enclosed use that likely is not going to generate as much music for the community. I feel like that addresses, that concern has been addressed as well. So, I'm generally inclined to support the staff recommendations for this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. I was presently surprised with this proposed revision, because it largely stay away from floodplain and all the density and development, multi-housing restaurant, where in the community center policy. So, with this, I think it literally meets the policy and literally meets what council member Syracuse was envisioning when we are doing our National Security Policy Session. So, this is ideal development with this specific site. And I am pleased that amphitheater, that was the biggest complaint from the neighbors across the river, and that was removed. So, yes, of course, there might be some disturbance, but not as much as, you know, open amphitheater speaker facing the river. So, that was a great plus. And yes, of course, we are sad to see some disturbance of the tree will happen, but pleased to hear development team is committed to bringing back more tree, replacing it, try to preserve a mature tree as much as they can. And if we have to disturb, maybe RV park is not everybody's cup of tea, but that's the least structure to be able to propose in a floodplain area. So, I think the biggest thing I am pleasantly surprised was, I did talk in January, but support from adjacent neighbor. Because those people who reside on the Pennington Bend, they're the one have most impact from this development. And back in January, they are pretty support of this plan, which was much intense than current plan. So, I think this is overall great and great to hear development team really listen to our suggestion and question and come back with updated plan. And I'm pleased to see the added condition about the publicly, privately maintained, publicly accessible greenway. So, for that, I'm in support of the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Tibbs.
I pretty much echo, I think, what Commissioner Henley said. It was really great to see our comments come back. So, you know, which just showed, listening to us and also listening to the community, you know, applaud Councilman Syracuse for, it seems like a lot of leadership through this. And, you know, appreciate you kind of, the words you said in the beginning, just how there's whole support for it. So, yeah, this is, to me, like, a good example of listening and making the changes. And, I mean, this is some big changes, so I am in support of this.
Commissioner Haines?
So, the plan is much, much better. A couple of quick questions for staff and maybe the councilperson. So, under the existing AR2A zoning, Lisa, you mentioned they could go in and build in the current floodplain and raise the house up. So, technically, the disturbance would be greater or could be greater under the AR2A zoning than what we are ending up with?
Sure, so, talking about, if someone, if they were to come in with a subdivision under the existing zoning, AR2A, they could create two acre lots. That's the minimum required by the zoning. There are no requirements in the zoning code today for preservation of any of the trees on the site. So, that's not something that's required by the code. So, if it was under a subdivision, then any of the trees could be removed. And they could plant lots within the floodplain, sort of all along Pennington Bend Road, which that has all been left undisturbed in this. They could plant lots all along there and build houses on all of those lots, so long as they met the stormwater regulations, which requires that you build above the flood elevation.
So, in staff's opinion, we're ending up with a much better finished plan because they're leaving a large component of this site undisturbed?
Right.
Okay. And then, second question, not that I distrust developers, since I am one, but under the disturbance process, how do we guarantee if they find an archaeological find that they're going to notify us? Is there any requirement that we can put on the project to have some type of monitor out there?
I mean, they are, that is all regulated by the state and is regulated very closely by the state in regards to any sort of disturbance or findings of that type that you then sort of have to stop immediately. You stop all work, and then you have to meet the state regulations. And I know that our historic team is typically involved in some of those instances when that happens. And so, that is generally regulated by the state. I'm trying to think of any other conditions that might be placed on it. I don't, and we might need Tara to weigh on this. I don't know if we can add more restrictive than what the state allows in regards to those regulations, is that something that they regulate? A lot of the stuff that we do, sort of with zoning or subdivisions, we are allowed to do that, which the state gives us the power and ability to. And so, I don't know if we can require additional, and so I would defer to Tara.
Okay. So, generally speaking, yes, it is controlled by the state. The question is whether we can exercise more authority than has been delegated to us. I think it's predominantly controlled by them, so I don't really think that they've given us any authority. But I would have to do research to verify that, because I don't want to go off the cuff and say that, like, in some statutes, it says, you know, Metro may exercise more than, at least, it has to be at least restrictive as us, but we can be more restrictive if they so choose. And this, I don't know the answer to. I would need to look further into this to make that, to make that call. But I do agree with Lisa that this is predominantly covered by state law.
So, if I'm correct, this has to continue through council, correct?
Yes, the bill has not been introduced yet. And zoning bills, unlike other bills at council, are amendable through third reading. And so, the council member could continue working on that and look at what might be possible and add additional conditions at council. And so long as they're as restrictive as what you all do, then it's okay to be added. They don't have to come back.
I don't want to belabor the point and try to add a condition, but certainly, Councilman Syracuse has been very thorough, has been a great supporter of this body. And I would just ask you to try to continue to research, is there a way to add a monitor to the process to ensure that if something's found, that we take care of that? So, just think about that as you continue the bill.
And Councilmember Syracuse, I'm happy to help you with that, and I can get you the answer to that question.
With that, I'm going to support the project, so I will make a recommendation of approval with all conditions.
That's proper motion, is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
A point of order.
Oh.
I think Lisa wanted us to say, including added condition, I stated on the memo.
As noted. It's a prop, we haven't voted yet. Is it, as noted with the memo? So, all in favor, say aye? There's no? One no, ayes have it. All right, so that leads us, commissioners? All right, so here we go. We are on to item 30.
I have more snacks, if you may.
All right, good evening, commissioners. Lazel Martone, staff planner, I'll be presenting item 30 on your agenda. The request is to rezone from zoning districts RS15, RS40, and CN to zoning district RS80 on various properties. Staff's recommendation is to approve with substitute. The application consists of various parcels on either side of Neely's Bend Road, totaling approximately 1,053 acres. Properties are currently zoned RS15, RS40, and CN. And uses in this area are primarily single-family residential and vacant residential land. Most of the properties are located within the T2 rural maintenance and conservation policy areas, although a small part is within the T2 rural neighborhood center policy. The conservation policy is intended to preserve environmentally sensitive land features through protection and remediation. The CO policy in this area is largely associated with streams, forested land, and areas identified in the floodplain, which are located throughout the area. T2 RM intends to maintain rural character as a permanent choice for living within Davidson County. T2 RM areas are intended to be one of the lowest densities of development in the county, generally not exceeding one dwelling unit per two acres. The proposed RS80 zoning district has a minimum lot size of 80,000 square feet, which is just under those two acres suggested by the T2 RM policy. Overall, the rezoning supports the conservation policy, the rural maintenance policy, to maintain rural residential land and preserve open space, as well as the environmentally sensitive land features. Given that a small part is within the T2 rural neighborhood center policy, staff recommends a substitute to remove the part of the map, 63 parcel 2.01 that is currently zoned CN.
Thank you, we'll open the side for public hearing. And Council lady, you're the applicant, so come on up and appreciate you waiting around. We didn't think we were going to be this long, either.
Well, you know, every time I come, you let me stay till the very end. So, I appreciate the fact that you want to hang out with me for so long.
I can't believe the team does that to you.
Yes, it's because they like me, I believe, want to spend time together. Yes, it's because they like me, I believe, want to spend time together. That's, that's how I'm going to perceive it. And yes, so the last time I was in front of you, I believe, or maybe the time before that, was last summer in June. We had a large development that was planned in this area that was in conflict with the T2 rural maintenance policy. After that decision was made to support the policy, as various lawsuits prior to that also encouraged us to do, the neighborhood then created a neighborhood association called the Rural Neely's Bend Neighborhood Association. And this is one of the first actions that this neighborhood association has made, is to ask the two downzoned so that the zoning is consistent with neighborhood policy. So that's why this action was happening and I'm, I'm willing, as I've talked to some neighbors that are concerned about it, if they do want to remove their, their parcels from the downzoning, I can do that. But again, it wouldn't be cohesive with the neighborhood policies. I just think this helps make it easier for everyone to understand and help support the goals of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, council lady. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the proposal? Come on up. And you have two minutes, please state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Hello again. My name is Jesse Strauss. I'm the, the new president of the Rural Neely's Bend Neighborhood Association. We were here last June. Thank you for hearing our case and respecting policy. I'll just say two things, just as council member Hancock just said, this was largely to bring the zoning in line with the policy. Just, you know, it's, it's nothing new, but it respects the unique character of our neighborhood. The other, I just wanted to share on a personal note, I am currently taking the master gardening course with UT Extension, Davidson County. And part of the reason that I'm, have been able to explore this world is because this beautiful little place in Davidson County exists. And so I think that it's really important to preserve that rural character, that we bring the zoning, which a lot of it was, I think, established back in the 60s and 70s. A lot has changed since then. Just across the neighbor, just across the river, we have a big development that you just discussed, considered. And so I think it's important that we preserve our little pocket. So I, I've been doing a lot of readings, so I wanted to share one quote from Alda Leopold. He was an early naturalist, I think at the beginning of the environment, environmental movement, and he had a book called Sand County Almanac. He opens it, I just started the book last night, he opens it saying, "There are some who can live without wild things and some who cannot." And I think a lot of my neighbors are in that category of those who cannot live without wild things, and we want to share all of that with the rest of the city of Nashville. So thanks for considering this.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Come on up. All right, that's loud enough. Last time it was really loud.
My name's Brandon Crowe. I'm at 325 Neely's Lane, just below, we're RS 80 in our property, 23 acres in a single-family home. Got hay fields behind the house. It was not something I've ever done before, but it's life now, right? And it was really reassuring in the last process last spring to hear from the commissioners about their time in the bend and seeing the cows and the horses and the rural nature. And that's, right, that's, that's something that's kind of escaping Davidson County due to growth. And what I heard a lot of in our time here, I don't have a speech prepared, I thought this was going to kind of move along with the consent agenda. I didn't see any public comment on record for opposition. I saw a lot of public comment about support. But what I've heard a lot of throughout this process is keeping trees, keeping rural areas, keeping some of conservation areas, and supporting development in areas that naturally support development due to the infrastructure. You'll note in all of the parcels outlined in red, there's a two-lane road leading in and out of it, there's one gas station, there's a school, there's two schools. It's simply not an area that can support excess homes and development. And so I want to thank you all for giving me the chance to, to come in front of you and, and speak, and I thank you all for your hard work for, for Davidson County.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a, we have another former council member, Commissioner Clifton, another former council member.
Hello, former councilman.
Hey, councilman.
Another folks. Appreciate the job y'all do and certainly opportunity to stand before you and the last time, I think we were in a preservation mode, and I've been in one, I think, ever since we got our first greenway down there. Peeler Park, I had the Taylor Farm, and certainly this would help planning commission and your support, that things like that happen. And consequently, with this, I stand to support our council lady too, because we're doing this in the name of preservation as well. So anything that will, you know, help wildlife, archaeology, and everything we talked about tonight here at the other place, that's just across the river. But certainly we appreciate it and we'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Welcome.
Before I waste time, if there is a significant exclusion, would you grant it to my property? If anybody wants to?
Ma'am, ma'am, just, yeah, yeah, we could talk to the councilman after.
I, I had, I had emailed the council person and hadn't heard back about my specific property. So if it can be on record that 1,700 Neely's Bend can be excluded and maintain its RS 40, I don't need to have an objection.
Yeah, council lady, could you come up and just put it on record? That'd be great.
So if this email came in the last 15 minutes, then that's why I haven't responded. But besides that, I did not get it and I would love to get that email. But yeah, any property that wants to be excluded, I'm willing to exclude. I just would like that the planning commission could explain to the audience how RS 80 can match up with T2 rural maintenance, and if you're in RS 40, what that would mean still with development in a T2 rural maintenance area. Thank you.
Thank you, council lady. We'll do that. And just, just so, moving forward, we generally, as commissioners, we generally don't take properties out at this level. It's usually between the planning commi, just so you know.
Typically, it's at the council level, and so that's when I would do it, is when it comes to council. But, but on record, willing to do that.
And in this building, we, there's bad cell service, so that's probably why the council lady has, if, if you don't sign on to the wifi here, then you, you don't get messages. So, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? All right, no rebuttal, we're good. Council lady, are you fin, are you finished? Council lady, do you want any other comments? We'll go last.
Yes, to wrap up, I would like to often, or just take this opportunity to mention that we just passed the capital improvement budget, which includes $4 million to build a barn and, you know, facilities for the mounted patrol. So another benefit of having this rural area is we have a place to house our city's mounted patrol horses, and so we're super excited to have that. And also, point of personal privilege, the council members get to prioritize their projects. And last year, the pedestrian path from Peeler Park to Stone River Bend Greenway was ranked number one with 135 points. This year, just released on Tuesday, it was ranked number one again, this time with 165 points. So I feel it coming on. I think that this is a great thing to have in a rural community, that connectivity and to connect 42,000 Madisonians to downtown via Greenway. So I think, you know, that's something else that you're not going to get in, in a really super crowded environment, and just a way, as Councilman Syracuse talked about earlier, to kind of marry that rural nature and, and connect it to the other part of the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed and Commissioner Blackshear, you want to go first?
Well, we heard one piece of opposition and the council lady has already agreed to resolve it. Sounds like it's not necessarily our province to do it ourselves, but that it will be resolved at the council level. So I'm, I'm happy to make a motion or allow others to speak on it.
Yeah, let's try. Anyone else wish, need to speak? And why don't you make a, try to make a motion in that way? I don't see anybody else wishing to.
Well, not to make this longer, Lord knows, but the council lady did actually mention something that I was curious about, about the interaction between the RS 40 and the T2 rural policy.
Really quickly, I want to note that councilwoman took me on a tour of this area. We walked it, and she said, "How do we preserve this with the zoning as it is?" And I said, "Get together with your neighbors and come forward with a proposal to rezone." So my hat's off to her for trying to figure out how to do that and for working on this. The rural policy is something this commission has been really dedicated to and has given a lot of attention to. And there are a series of zoning districts that are associated with that policy to ensure that we're promoting conservation and other things, and RS 80 is in that policy category. RS 40, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So what we have in this situation is, is a lot of zoning districts RS 40 that are not necessarily aligned with the policy. That is not unusual. A lot of the times, policies are forward-thinking, they're, they're sort of the ideal scenario for an area, and so we'll set a policy that may not necessarily align with the zoning, and that's what's happened here. And so, and, and you'll note that there are sort of areas left out where they were not included in the application, and it's because those properties are under the 80,000 square feet, so we don't, didn't want to get in a situation, we worked with council member on this, where we were creating lots that were non-conforming. And so there still will be pockets of RS 40, but it's because of the size of those existing lots and the way that we didn't want to create non-conformities. So if, if properties are left out that are, that are, that are still zoned RS 40, they wouldn't be necessarily compatible with the policy, but if someone came in to want to develop those, then we would be in a scenario of, of reviewing them against the rural subdivision regulations.
Gotcha. That was really helpful. So with that, I will make a motion to approve staff's recommendation of approval with the substitute.
Thank you. That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Those no, ayes have it, and it's passed as a substitute. We are on to other business. We've gotten 34, and now historic, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, one update is, we have lost our longest employee over 17 years, Sean Alexander. But good news is, he is moving to Park Department. So we can now collaborate with Park and Historic Zoning Commission.
Hold on one second. If y'all could, please, we're still conducting a meeting. I really appreciate it. In other words, quiet down, Jim Forkum. See you guys later.
We are shocked to lose such a longtime and great employee, but we are so happy he will be moving into Metro Parks and working with planning of the Metro Parks, so we can ensure historic zoning and historic policy will be enhanced at the Metro Parks.
Thank you for the update. Parks, Commissioner Haynes has left, executive committee. So we do have, commissioners, a, a rule change on subdivision plots that we need to bring to your attention, and it will be forthcoming, and Lisa's going to give us an explanation. There was, there's been a state law change last year that affects this, so here's the memo.
So I'm passing out a memo to you all, along with a redlined version of amended rules and procedures for the planning commission. So as the memo goes into the details of sort of the history of what has happened, but prior to this change in the state law, staff had been delegated the ability to approve subdivision plats of two or fewer lots or any final plats where a concept plan had been approved by the planning commission previously. So there was a change to the state law with a caption that was somewhat narrow, and so when you got broader into the bill, we realized that we need to take some action, some corrective actions to get ourselves back the authority delegated for administrative approval of plats. So the state law does two things in regards to administrative approval. It now will allow staff to administratively approve plats that are on existing streets that meet all of the subdivision regulations that are up to five lots. And so that is sort of an expansion of our ability, which is actually quite nice. If, if they're on existing lots, they meet, I mean, existing roads, they meet the subdivision regulations, we can approve those quickly. The other thing that it does though, is does limit the final plats that are associated with a concept plan that we can approve administratively to those that are 25 lots or fewer. And so that is a change that we're going to have to work through with our friends and the development community as they come in with final plats to get those approved and recorded. We'll have to sort of work through how we might deal with those plats where they have, in the past, we have recorded plats with 50, 75, 100 lots altogether. So we won't be able to do that anymore, so we're going to have to work through that. In order to be able to get this power delegated to us, the state law indicates that first, the council has to delegate to the planning commission the authority to then delegate to staff. And so I've worked with council member Withers and Laura and Ann at Legal to draft a resolution to get that introduced. I've already filed it into the system so that it can be introduced and passed at the March 7th council meeting. And that resolution will just say, pursuant to the state law, we, the Metro Council, give the planning commission, delegate to the planning commission the authority to delegate to staff. So that's sort of the first step. The second step is that then you all, as the planning commission, have to delegate to staff. And so we have drafted amended rules, and we did leave it in a strike-through version so that you can see the changes, and the changes are primarily on pages 13 and 14. And what that does is it just gets us back in line, and this would be you all amending your rules to then delegate to us pursuant to state law, the ability to approve those plats.
And Lisa, we're not asking for a vote or.
No, obviously, we're not asking even for feedback yet. We're giving you the earliest notice, the minute we figured out that we needed to update our procedures. This is our recommended path forward. Yes.
So we ask you just to take this and review it.
Yes.
Let us know if you have questions, and then we will ask you to take a vote on it and.
We will have the amended rules for adoption on the March 9th agenda. So to pursuant to your rules, we need to give you rules for amendment. Yes. 10 days prior, and so we're giving them to you today, which is more than 10 days prior, so that you can review them, so that we can then get them on the March 9th meeting.
These lawyers, again, with all the processes, chairman.
Do it though.
I know, right. So just, again, this is your advance first notice, we have an issue, please review this. If you want to talk to us, ask questions, we're happy to talk it through with you. We do feel some urgency to try to get us, the commission, in line with where the state law is right now, and so that's why we're pressing now. And thank you, Councilman Withers, for your support and quick help.
And this gets us back to what we were doing, prior to the law change.
Generally, yes.
Generally, okay. Thank you very much. I don't have anything else under executive committee. Director, do you have anything else? Any other?
Nashville Next Work Session is currently planned. We'll send a note reminding all of you for early March, I don't, sorry, March 7th. Thank you. Looking forward to it.
All right. Councilman, any legislative update?
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to note for everyone that the capital spending plan that council member Hancock referenced did include funding for East Bank infrastructure planning work. As we know, there's lots of controversy sometimes about large projects in town, and certainly the East Bank has had a lot of community support, but there is still some concern as it relates to Nissan Stadium specifically, which isn't really a planning issue, but nevertheless, that gets raised. So I appreciate the support of quite a few former council members, including all District 6 council members going back all the way to John Summers, everyone, John Summers, Jeff Ackerman, Eileen Behan, obviously Mike Jamison, Pete Westerholm, myself, like the whole, the laying on of hands of District 6 was in favor of retaining that, as well as some of our District 7 and other council members as well. Just stressing the importance of that to the East Nashville community that's been helping to. to reimagine and revitalize the East Bank for many, many decades now. So council member Sean Parker did offer an amendment, which was helpful to some of my colleagues that had some concerns, that specified that none of this funding is specifically going to Nissan Stadium, since we still have a lot of decisions to make about that in any event. Regardless of the decision on Nissan Stadium, there'd be a few years in the, in the future, and I will not be on council at that time, which I'm relieved will be the case. But so, so, but just wanted to say, I want to thank Director Kemp worked with some of the other department directors just to explain to council what this funding is for and what, how it will benefit many areas of our city. And we were able to get that capital spending plot passed, including that funding. So look forward to seeing work continue in a collaborative fashion. So that's it for me.
Thank you, councilman. That completes our agenda. Is there a motion in adjournment? Where adjourn?
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.